I would like to call to order the Avalon City Council meeting of Tuesday, February 4th. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Place your hand over your heart and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if we could please stand and have a few moments of silence. Last couple of weeks, we had some major tragedy. Deadly crash with Kobe Bryant, his family and the other families that were on board, the pilot Ara Zubayan. We also lost a local Steve Traeger that was here for many years and worked for the county.
Very well.
What's that?
Paramedics.
Oh, paramedics, yes. And for Maynard Queesemberry, who recently passed. Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Haves.
Here.
Councilmember Olson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Cassidy.
Here.
Mayor Marshall.
Here. No presentations this evening?
We do not.
Announcements and written communications?
I have several announcements from the city clerk side, and this is on the election. We did hear back from the county. And the polling place for the LA County election and our municipal election is going to be up at the Country Club in the dining room. That is the only place on the island that, not even down at Two Harbors, they have to come in town this time. Something new this year, I don't know if you remember, the gentleman that came and gave us a whole presentation that was about 30 minutes long on the new voting system. And they will be offering, as the public, you can vote over town if you stay in LA County and go to any polling place over there, or here on the island. Instead of the one day, you can do it for 11 days. Starting on February 22nd through March 2nd, which is a Monday, it's from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And then on Election Day, Tuesday, March 3rd, it is from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. We'll have that information on the city website. It's all under Election 2020. And I think I had one more. Oh, I wanted to remind everybody that the last day to register is February 18th, and the last day to request a vote by mail is February 25th. And if you need to check to see if you are a registered voter, you go to lavote.net. And there are several reasons for you to check your registration. If you've moved anywhere in town, even if it's just the other side of town, you need to change that. If you changed your last name. And I think that's it.
Great, thank you. That's it for, and that's it from the city clerk?
Let's see.
Okay. Department head reports.
Good evening. Bob Greenlaw, Director of Public Works. Couple items tonight to report. Response to the wind event surge over the last two days involving Public Works and harbor maintenance and also harbor, JJ will probably talk some too. So Monday resulted in damage to the hinge on floats one and two. We have a hinge that connects them together that we will have to repair that. And then we also had erosion on Pele Beach Road. Otherwise, the project in the mole was pretty much, fared pretty well on that day, but on the second day here, the wind direction had changed and the wharf with all the construction on it took a direct hit right at the end where we had the scaffold. So that's why the town, all the members of town, it saw all the four-by-fours and plywood in the water in South Beach and also in Lover's Cove. So, and then the contractor was not able to get back over here because they had left for the weekend, except they always leave a staff member here during the weekend. So being able to respond to it first thing, even though there was high waves, they had kind of a short response, but then they came on the 9:50 boat, so they were here by 11:00, and they were able to respond by 11:00. By 2:00 o'clock, we had it all cleaned up. So, and it's all back over on the mole now. So, and then also, we have the re-roof of Casino Way restrooms has started, and the Public Works staff is completing that work.
Great.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, and thank goodness there were no injuries, you know, trying to clean that up. And that's like you said.
Counsel? Good evening. Yes, you know what? We skated through with no injuries. And it was a pretty impressive windstorm, northwest winds, and then switching around to northeast. And we had some gusts upwards of 40 knots. So we had hats off and kudos to, you know, the harbor guys, the fire department guys, the county paramedics, and county fire. We had an incident down at the point above Edison, and where a sailboat, a guy that lives on a sailboat decided to jump off and swim to shore. And by the time he stopped swimming, he was at F&amp;S Point on the rocks. So that was, it was quite the mobiling rescue units because we weren't really sure where they're going to go and how we're going to get them off. And you couldn't talk from me to you because of the wind and the waves. So it was planned that Baywatch paramedics swam them back out into the ocean around the beach, and they climbed up on the beach. So it just kudos the way we work together, the teamwork and everything else. Like Bob said, we did suffer some damage on that floats two and three. We're in the process of fixing, trying to fix it. It's going to be, it's going to take a while to get it fixed, but it is fixable. Good thing, we ordered the new hoist.
Yay!
Yeah. And so we expect delivery to the painter on March, about March 2nd. So hopefully, that thing will be up and ready for the summer season. So we're working hard at it, but there's a lot of projects going on, especially with this new round of storms. But I think we're up for the challenge. Any questions?
No, good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. I too wanted to commend the first responders for the, could have been a very serious tragedy out on the water. I was there for the whole thing. I saw it. And Harbor Patrol, Baywatch, Fire Department, both fire departments. But by the time they got there, they were able to get a life jacket on the victim with a helmet. And then two Baywatch members went into the water. And when I say they went into the water, there's, I would guess, five-foot swells pushing them into the rocks. And they did an excellent job. And they really, could have been a tragedy. So my hats off to them. They did a great job. The other thing I wanted to talk about was, we had an incident regarding four students at the school. Apparently, how it started, there was a social media argument between two of the students. One called the other one fat and blah, 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 little student disagreement. And all four students decided to go down to the arch and fight. Four students, all four were fighting. The good thing is, the several people that were there were videotaping it. So we got about 15 videos of this fight, so we know exactly what happened. I wish they would have put the camera down and stopped the fight. That's what should have happened. But we do know exactly what happened, and we arrested all four of the juveniles for fighting. There was no serious injuries. The injuries were minor, and we just don't want that to happen in our community. And the Sheriff's Department is going to do everything possible, one, to hold those juveniles responsible for their actions, and number two, ultimately, they're going to have a court date and have to deal with juvenile probation to see what the District Attorney's Office is going to do with the case.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions for me?
I just want to say that, you know, the fight happened. It's unfortunate, and it's sad that it happened, but shame on all of you for filming it, and shame on you to the people who were encouraging it, who were trying to give pointers on how to fight better. That was just disgusting of a video to watch. And it's really sad that that happened in our community. We try so hard to better what's happening for our community, and it's just, it's unfortunate. And I was personally disgusted to see the video. But thank you guys for doing your part. I appreciate you guys doing your part as hard as it is. And, you know, the fight itself was sad.
And what Councilmember Cassidy is speaking about is, on the video, you can hear bystanders yelling where to kick the person, where to hit them, instead of, like I said, getting in there and stopping the fight.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, city staff. I just wanted to quickly update you on, we are going to do a routine test of the Code Red reverse 911 system tomorrow, sometime between 10:00 and noon. And just a reminder, anyone that isn't signed up on the system can go to the City of Avalon website, click on the Code Red icon, and they can sign up that way. Or if they text the word Avalon to 99411, so 99411. If you text Avalon to that number on your smartphone, it'll sign you up that way, and it's even simpler. And if anyone has any questions or has any difficulty with the system, they can contact the fire department.
Great.
Unless you have questions for me, that's all I have to report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt Baker, speaking on behalf of Finance. Last week, I wanted to report out that I attended the California Society of Municipal Finance Officers Conference. It was a great experience. I just want to thank Counsel and City Manager for giving me that opportunity. And I also wanted to let Counsel know that next meeting, we're planning a presentation with a mid-year budget update, so next meeting to be looking for that.
Great. Questions?
Unless there's anything else, that's all I have to report out.
I was going to mention something in my Councilmember report, but maybe I could just ask you the question right now. I, just because there was something that came up in our agenda tonight, I was wondering if it, how, if it's not too much work or how difficult it would be to get some sort of like quarterly finance report that kind of shows us a budget versus actual and/or like an overall contract versus actuals. So, so like we say, we've agreed to do this item at a not-to-exceed amount of $5,000, but if it goes over to like $5,500, I would just be curious to know, what are the overages that we're experiencing on like a quarterly basis?
That's something we definitely look at and put together in the future.
Is it not, I mean, I would just be curious to know, if it's too much time, then I don't want to subject city staff to that, but I would, I don't know if anybody else is curious of that, but it helps me to make the decisions.
I think we can come to some, and, you know, I would appreciate your guys' input, but I think we can come to some, we can come to something where we can report out where it's not too much work on finance, but still gives you the information you need. So what I can do is, in the mid-year budget update, kind of show you what I've envisioned, and if it's in line with kind of what you're looking for, maybe do a quarterly update rather than a semi-annual, but something we can look at for sure.
Okay, great.
Well, it kind of seems like we've asked for something like this before, just overall, instead of waiting for mid-year budget to see how we're going.
And, you know, the intent behind some of the tourism or the visitor-driven revenue reports is to show how we're tracking, you know, compared to prior years for revenue. But I guess what my ask would be is, what I can do is, I can look at other cities to see what their quarterly reporting looks like. But I would appreciate what feedback I could get on what we're looking for exactly, but...
Okay, good. First, if any of you have any input, you want to give it to Matt, then.
Counsel, can I just say something, please? Is that I was standing here smiling at Matt because our last month or so, we have been discussing having more regular reports to the council. I think since I started here, I've always heard about these reports, particularly after, we used to have them, and then I don't know what's happened. We got way behind. And so Matt has come up with a couple different versions of it, but he's not satisfied with it, and he hasn't had the time really to make it his own. And so what I would like to propose is, maybe during my evaluation update at the next council meeting, that Matt could come in during that time to show you some of his things to see if it's what you have in mind. And I know Cindy, as far as contracts, that if we come to the council for a certain amount of money on a contract, we're very cognizant of the fact if we go over even $5. And so it's like tonight, there is one for almost $4,000, I think it is. So absolutely, and the contract spreadsheet, I know that you've all been waiting for too, is sitting on my desk.
Great, thank you.
Perfect.
Other questions of Matt?
No.
Acting on behalf of the Finance Department.
Good evening, Counsel. Amanda Cook, Planning Director. I just have one really quick, good news. We heard from HCD today on our SB2 grant, which is our housing planning grant, and they are recommending approval of that grant. It's $160,000, 80 of which will be to go towards updating the housing element, which you will be doing in 2021. So I just want to let you guys know that that, we got, that grant came in.
Wonderful. Any other questions?
Any questions for me? Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Just a few updates from the Recreation Department. Tomorrow, we start a new program at the teen center. It's called Spoken Word and Rap. It's going to fall on Wednesday night. It's a free program to junior high and high school. We've got two of our staff that I think do really well in it, Jen and Matt. But it's basically teaching how to kind of put your thoughts down in the way of poems and the way of rap, and they'll put music to it at some point in time. We also have another new program that we start this Sunday. It's a flag football program for first and second graders. Four-week program, we're midway into our third through eighth grade program, but it's a four-week program that will kind of develop some skills for flag football. In the last couple of weeks, it'll kind of break into some games, so we're looking forward to that. In a couple of weeks, we'll have our spring/summer guide out, and all our registration will start for that. On February 18th, we will start to take sign-ups for our Spring Festival, so that's right around the corner. Spring Festival will be April 9th, but registration for booze will start on 18th. And then one new, another new program that we're going to start here in a couple of weeks, it's the 25th. It's a running club. We had some interest with some of the kids in the community, they wanted to extend their season a little bit, as well as some offseason training for some of the other sports. So also for junior high and high school, it's $35. It's 10 weeks. It's a coach workout once a week, and the coach will give a second workout for the week. And it will include entrance into the 5K on the March 15th, 14th.
Oh, 14th?
Yeah, so the race that we've got here, it'll include that. And then lastly, this year is Leap Year. I think I've shared this before, you're all invited out. We're going to do a Leap Day event on Front Street. We're going to have leap frog contest, big, small, and everything in between down Front Street. And then Coffee and Cookie Co. is going to help us with some refreshments at the end with a coffee and hot chocolate for those who participate. So 10:00 on the corner of Clarissa and Front Street for that.
Great. That sounds fun. Okay. That's it.
I only go, I'm sorry, four years.
Well, yeah, thank goodness, so you only have to leap once. Okay, so now we're, no other departments, we're going to City Manager and City Attorney report.
Last week, I attended with several other staff members the USBR Water Reliability Group out at Edison, and we're just slowly progressing along in that. And I wanted to make a correction from the last council meeting where I reported that the DMV had requested a full day. Well, when we communicated back that, yes, we were excited they were coming, the second, or third email implied it was just an additional half-day. So the Wednesday, so there'd be two full days, half-day the first day, and then two full days. But we're waiting, still waiting for the contract to come back to us so we can verify that. But we're still excited to have even that extra half a day.
Yeah, great.
I think that's really exciting that that worked in our favor. And I think I asked this question in the last meeting, but I just wanted to verify it. How, how do we make it more accessible for members of the community to get appointments? Because I know the appointments fill up within a few moments of when they open up.
All I know, Cindy, is that when, they send us everything. They tell us exactly when to put out the signup sheets, so we advertise it according to the schedule that they give us. It's all on them, and I know we can't do it electronically. They want to see that paper copy of people coming in and putting their names. And then daily, we're sending them those sheets, and then they do whatever they do on their end, so they're prepared for everybody when they show up.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know how to make that, it can't be electronic, that's all they've told us.
Okay.
It has to be a paper sign-in sheet.
And I think that there was a little bit of inaccurate information out there in the public, and I think it would be great if you could just, for a moment, speak to it, that it is not true that city staff takes all of the appointments, that, and my understanding is that it is true that city staff has to wait a certain amount of time before they can put their names on the list for appointments.
City staff does not get the privilege of signing up before anybody else. When that signup sheet, and Dudley watches over it. He puts it down, tapes it up, he puts out all the, all the books and everything else that everybody else needs. He has pencils out. We, and I will say that we've had pencils out, and then people have come and erased somebody's name and put their own name in, not city staff, but other individuals. And so we had to go to pens, and I think we've gone back to pencils, but absolutely not.
Okay.
Absolutely not.
City Attorney?
Yes, this last weekend, I attended the Independent Cities Association Conference, which is the conference of LA County cities that have their own fire and police departments. And during the lunch, there was an announcement that there is a lawsuit brought by the City of Beverly Hills against the LA County Register pertaining to the elections. Not this election, because it's too late, but it is with respect to November elections. And the basis of the lawsuit is that on the electronic voting, for each, if it's candidates, only four names are on each page. So that if there are more than four names on each page, the voter has to press the "more" button. If the voter presses the "next" button, that then goes to the next office. So because we have an election with five names on it, to get the full range of the names, you need to press "more," which will bring you to the last name. If you press "next," it just goes to the next election. So I haven't looked at the ballots yet. I haven't seen them, but they're coming, but there is, there are lawsuits, cities are joining this. And so for Avalon citizens, make sure when you are voting for the races, that if only four names appear, there are five names in one of our races, so you need to click "more" to get that additional name brought up.
Wow. That, yeah, that could be good.
I think, I was frankly shocked that within the computer range, it could only fit four on a page.
Right, right. Yeah. Well, this is the experimental one, right?
Yes.
This is the new, yeah. Okay, Councilmember reports.
I would just like to make an update to the information I released last week regarding the Grand Prix. Unfortunately, some inaccurate information got out to one of the Cycle News magazines, which created a little bit of a problem. So I'd just like to kind of make an official announcement about the Grand Prix. The 2020 announcement that the Catalina Grand Prix is returning in November 2020 was incorrect. The event has not been confirmed. Preliminary discussions are underway with the City of Avalon, Catalina Island Company, and others over the possibility of the event occurring. Further, many other details include potential sponsors, insurance entitlements, environmental matters, and more will need to be discussed and worked out. And as I said last week, discussions have been ongoing for the past couple of months. We are excited to be partnering with the island company for this historic race. So it's, we, once we have information that's accurate, there'll be the right person to disseminate the information, it may be a website, and we'll update the community as details emerge.
Great, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll be attending the Gateway Cities Council of Government meeting tomorrow night, and that's all I have.
I want to thank the chamber for putting on the Candidates Night last night. It was a fun, invigorating, interesting evening. I also want to report that I attended the League of California Cities Community Services Committee, which I'm the chairman of, meeting, and also the League of California Cities Environmental Qualifying Committees up in Sacramento a couple of weeks ago. And there's some, first of the year, they would just basically set the work plan and don't do a lot of stuff, the actions get done the second or third.
Thank you. I will be attending the Southern California Association of Governments meeting on Thursday morning in Los Angeles. And I didn't write my statement out, but I, we had a wonderful time last, the last council meeting, we gave a proclamation to Josie Valdez as being the oldest living island-born resident. And then people contacted me and said, "Well, I don't think Josie's the oldest. She's maybe the oldest female." So someone was saying, "What's Doug Bombard?" And then my other reliable source said, "No, it's not." So I ran into Mr. Bombard, and this is Bombard last Friday, and I said, "By the way, where were you born?" He was born in Avalon, and he is 93. So we will be doing something to rectify that in the near future. And that's all I... Oral communication. This is an opportunity for people in the, in this room to address us at this time. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each. And we have the machine? Yes. Gabby's got the machine. I'm surprised you didn't break it last night.
Tim took really good care of it for you. Lisa Lavelle, just wanted to let everyone know, we'll be outside of Vons this coming Thursday through Sunday from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. to do more voter registration. In the first week, we registered about a dozen people for new registrations, and then also updated about a dozen and a half addresses for people. Gave out a lot of forms, answered a lot of questions, talked about the new voting method, so we'll see you out there.
Thank you, Lisa.
Jason Paray, Catalina Island Medical Center CEO. I just want to make a quick comment, and I'll read real fast, because I want to get out my vision and my, what I feel in regards to the cannabis issue. I would like to express my opinion on cannabis in our community. With the coming ballot measure, I put considerable thought and research into this issue of cannabis. It is my belief that the role of healthcare is to improve and reduce the risk of an individual's health. It is true that individuals in our community do have the ability to go over town to purchase cannabis products. 66% of the cannabis products that are purchased come from illegal dispensaries in California. When purchasing from an illegal dispensary, an individual does not know what is in the product that they are purchasing. These illegal dispensaries purchase their product from manufacturers and grow operations that may contain solvents, pesticides, fungicides, heavy metals, vitamin E, and other foreign materials. When purchasing from a legal dispensary, an individual knows that the product they are purchasing has been tested for these foreign materials and is a safer product. This is reducing risk in our community. There is plenty of cannabis in our community. I do not believe that we will be increasing the amount of consumption in Avalon. We will be providing a safer product for consumers. On the issue of improving health of our community, I believe cannabis has a role in medicine. The cannabis industry is in its infancy of understanding the role of cannabis in healthcare. Currently, when utilizing cannabis for medicine, much is unknown. There are over 115 cannabinoids in this plant. Each cannabinoid has a different effect on the human body. Some cannabinoids are known to have a more pronounced impact on pain, anxiety, sleep, muscle relaxation, while others improve conditions related to cancer, epilepsy, Crohn's disease, nausea, multiple sclerosis, insomnia, and PTSD. Two cannabinoids that are most known about are THC and CBD. The hemp plant and the marijuana plant have been hybrid over the centuries to produce these cannabinoids. The cannabis industry is moving forward to create new products that have both higher and lower levels of these two cannabinoids and the other cannabinoids. Even today, as we move forward, more products will be produced for more specific medical purposes. Am I done?
No, give that to Mike.
I desire to develop a different model of a dispensary to improve the lives, reduce the risk to cannabis users, and continuously work to ensure it has, it is used responsibly in our community. We are all concerned about cannabis and alcohol use amongst... We are all concerned about cannabis and alcohol use amongst teens in Avalon. It is my belief that prohibition does not work, has never worked and will not work in the future. Teens have access to almost any drug they desire. The best and most effective method to keep teens from utilizing drugs is education. As part of my vision for a dispensary, it is to develop an educational program for both teens and adults. A considerable amount of profit will be, from the dispensary will be invested in providing scientifically backed education to ensure teens in our community understand the risks and impacts of cannabis and other drugs. With the knowledge, with knowledge, I feel more teens will make the correct choice for their future. And I have to respectfully, uh, go against what Mr. Johnson said last night with his quote, of medical doctors are not taught in college about endo, endocannabinoid system. How is their professional, professional advice any different than mine? I have immersed myself in the industry, I know about the different terpenes, I know the effect on the receptors, I do, I don't think that a qualified medical professional is qualified in that aspect. They don't even research behind certain drugs, research behind certain drugs and the correlation with cannabis. My, my statement to that is physicians receive a broad education in physiology and pathophysiology of the human body as part of their medical school, not college. In addition, many subspecialties including emergency medicine, neurology, psych, psychiatric, psych, psychiatry, receive more advanced training in the mechanisms of action and clinical effects of various drugs, including cannabinoids. I have no doubt that there are non-medical individuals with experience and knowledge regarding the specific actions of various cannabinoids and various strains of marijuana plants.
With all due respect, I have to cut you off.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. And next time, practice reading faster.
Use smaller words.
Cannabinoids, we can say that alone.
Hello, Paul Bertral, Avalon Library, thank you very much for the event last night. All that's important to me is how many times the library got called out, thank you very much for those. I also wanted to mention, uh, in terms of the voting discussion, the library is a vote by mail site, we've set up two big boxes for ballots, and mailed ballots that will be absolutely safe and will be turned over on election day. So we are a vote by mail site. I'm waiting to hear for going to be a census site, there's some talk, we might have a census kiosk in there as well, I don't know quite yet, but that might be coming up. I rushed here, right from our Make Mo Day at the library, I have 30 kids with our Make Mo librarian making LED Valentine's Day cards, you're going to probably see some of those when you go home tonight. They're looking pretty good, that's a great program, I'm very pleased to bring STEM to the island in this monthly program. Coming up this weekend, I have a visit, I've formed, we formed a partnership with the Catalina Conservancy, they've created these four beautiful naturalist backpacks. There's one on bugs, one on birds, one on animals, one on sea life, keyed to the island. So you can check them out, families can check them out and go wandering along the seashore, you know, with the exhibits. There's also a notebook of activities you can do, it is, there's some books in there because we're a library. So it's, it's really awesome, an awesome program. They're getting, a couple of their education people are coming to the library on Saturday afternoon to introduce the backpacks, I think that's going to be a delightful activity. Starting on, well, starting right on the 19th to the 26th, I've received a big box of stuff from a program called NASA at your library, which is going to be some basic astronomy activities, I'm looking forward to that. I've got a magician coming on February 12th, that should be fun, it's, he's Alan Roy Oshiro, he's going to do the Chinese rope tricks and floating ping pong balls, I really don't know. And then I also booked, because I had some money from the county, a ukulele performance by a professional ukulele performer, he's also going to do a bit of a class. I, that, I sort of intended that to be, to dovetail with the Friends of the Libraries ukulele class, so hopefully some of those people will bring their ukuleles and learn a little ukulele thing or two. Other stuff, keep going, our regular programs, Smarty Pants Storytime on Saturday, the mayor was a special guest a couple, a couple of weeks ago, toddler play and explore, play type babies on Friday at 11:00.
And your time is up.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll take it. Good job as always.
Can I, can I just say to LA County Library and to Paul, thank you so much for the lighting on the outside of the library, I noticed that, we've talked about it a few times and I did notice it, and just want to say thank you very much.
Yes, I, yeah, there's a regular who sits out there, he's jumping for joy, so I'm very pleased about that.
Thank you, Paul.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council, Jim Luciohan, Catalina Island, Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau, I just wanted to publicly acknowledge the support of city staff with regard to the candidates forum last night, especially Jordan and Alex, they were a great assistance and very much appreciated. And Gabby, I don't think I broke your timer, despite getting frustrated with it once or twice. And also wanted to share with you and with the community that our ongoing relationship with Visit California continues to bring us benefits. They have a nationally or internationally syndicated podcast, the most recent edition of which is half devoted to the Catalina Island and involves an interview with Gail Fornesir from the museum, so you can find it on visitcalifornia.com and listen to it and share it and love it. And we also have a large picture for the 2020 Visit California Visitor Guide, we're one of only two photos for LA County in the 2020 guide, and we also recently were the location for, of creative media influencers, mostly hosted by the island company just because of the subjects that were available on the days they were here, but they were here for a couple of days, and so we look forward to seeing how that comes through.
Great, thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, the consent calendar.
We have four items this evening on the consent calendar, the first one is minutes from the January 21st, 2020 Regular Meeting of the City Council. Second one is dispersment of warrants for a total of $834,073.27, and that's for the period of January 11th through January 24th of 2020. The third one is to ratify authorization to increase the not to exceed amount to $23,295 for the processing of the backfill material with Freedom Property Management. Number four is to adopt an ordinance of the City of Avalon amending Chapter Four of Title Three of the City of Avalon Municipal Code to implement the Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act procedures for public projects.
Council?
I'll make a motion to approve items number one through four on the consent calendar.
Second.
Move to second, comments?
Call for the vote.
All ayes.
We have a public hearing and we'll have Michael Palmer come up.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, Mike Palmer, Assistant City Manager. I also have with me, who will be helping to assist in any technical related questions that council may have, Dino Sarafini from Michael Baker International. He's the consultant that has been working with us over the last couple of years in putting this nexus study together. So the item before you today is consideration for adoption of the development fees. As you may or may not recall, development impact fees are fees essentially that local governments are able to charge, it can defray either all or a portion, a portion of the proportionate cost of development, it's imposed as a condition of property development. And the code where it's found in that allows government to do this is found in the California Mitigation Fee Act, which is Assembly Bill 1600. And basically, all that did was establish statewide procedures for exacting fees from development projects. There are some conditions that cities have to go through in order to pass these and in order to consider these, and part of that is identifying the purpose of the fee, identifying the use of the fee revenues, determining a reasonable relationship between the fee's use and the fee's need and the type of development that's paying these fees, and then determine the reasonable relationship between the amount of the fee and the cost of the facility that's attributed. So we need to draw some sort of connection or nexus, and hence the study that we developed that kind of talks through how we came to the formulas, how the fees are structured, what projects and future projects are they going to. These fees cannot be paid for current infrastructure improvements, they can only pay for future infrastructure improvements. Part of these development impact fees also have two different categories that are considered capacity charges. Capacity charges are very similar to development impact fees, these are imposed on new or upsized connections to water or sewer systems. There are some very similar reporting procedures, but the way you go about adopting them is a little bit different, and there's a little bit more of a nuanced difference between the two. They are still subject to the same kind of audit and compliance provisions that are found with development impact fees. So we've been talking about this for a little bit of time, and when we brought this to city council back in August, we were originally proposing some different fee schedules through discussion, through public input, what we ended up deciding was a total of eight different categories. Two of these categories are capacity charges, the other six are actual development impact fees. And so the fee categories are listed on the slide, and they cover fire protection facilities, park and rec facilities, general government and other public facilities, circulation, related infrastructure improvements, transportation facilities, landfill, and then the two, the last two are capacity charges, the reclaimed water and the wastewater. So at the August city council meeting, when we had brought this nexus report for consideration on adoption, after some discussion, we heard from council that there were a couple of issues with the fee structures as they were proposed, and these were on two of the categories. Originally, we had residential fees that were split into single family and multifamily, and these were originally proposed as a per dwelling unit. However, based on the discussion that ensued and some of the questions, there was an issue of proportionality and equity. We wanted to make sure, or council wanted to make sure that whatever fee structure we ended up adopting had the ability to be fair, proportional to the fee that was being paid. And the example that was given then was, let's say, and I'm going to use some extreme examples, let's say you have a 300 square foot house and a 15,000 square foot house, based on a per dwelling unit, they would be paying the same amount of fees even though they're obviously having completely different impacts in a lot of different ways. So what we ended up doing was look, we took council's discussion at heart, we went and revised, we researched what other cities were doing, and there are a couple of different things that cities could do, and we brought this to council as more of an update in the fee structure in December, and essentially what we did was, we considered a per bedroom, unfortunately, per bedroom you'd run into the same sort of proportionality and equity issues that the per dwelling unit. If I've got a three bedroom tiny house and I got a three bedroom 15,000 square foot house, they're still paying the same exact fee structure. So we ended up going with the square footage fee structure, and I do apologize, the slide looked a little bit larger on my computer screen than it does up on the TV. But for those who can't look, this was the previous fee structure, and so you can see down at the bottom, the total was approximately $27,000 for a single family and $33,000 for the multifamily. And what we did was, we looked at eliminating those two, single family and multifamily, and we did a revised combined fee. Part of that was based on the feedback when staff went out and had a conversation with the public, we talked to the Chamber of Commerce, the business communities, we had separate conversations with Catalina Island Company, and we determined that, you know, in Avalon, it really doesn't make sense to have two different fee structures. The housing here is a little bit unique, it is kind of a blended, there's not a very distinct distinction between single family and multifamily, as you can go onto the mainland, you can go into almost any other city, and typically you'd have higher density in multifamily, lower density in the single family, and that's not necessarily the case here. And so when we originally brought this to council for direction and approval on the approach in December, we had originally proposed a blended fee, taking the two averages for a 1.62 occupancy, and we tested those on the different assumptions. We have since revised that to 1.67, and that reflects the data that is cited in the revised report, and it comes from the Department of Finance. So the California Department of Finance kind of agreed with some of the numbering that the average that we were taking is approximately the same occupancy, is five tenths of a different. So that did result in slightly higher fees overall in a couple of the categories. Once we adjusted for some population figures, refined population figures from the Department of Finance for 2019, it, population declined by 20 or 40 people, and then we revised the service population or the visitor growth from 1,400 to 800, which is cited in our EIR and our general plan. It did have a small, almost negligible impact to the fees. So some of the fees in the categories went up a couple cents, others went down a couple cents, others stayed the same, but ultimately it upticked a little bit higher than what we had originally quoted. And so when you compare this fee now to the rest of the entire development impact fee structure, with the exception of lodging, and lodging is still done on a per room basis, because when we're talking about lodging, we're talking about hotels, motels, things that, that would be assessed in a per room, it makes sense to continue to assess their development impact fees as a per unit, but everything else got changed. Instead of doing a per thousand square feet, we just, for easier calculation purposes, we changed everything to a per square foot, so we divided the original fees by a thousand, and you can see the residential fees and where they stack up on the per square foot fee for the others. So we did want to compare this, and I think I've talked before about some of the difficulties in comparing fees in, development impact fees here with development impact fees with other cities. And part of the issue is when cities are considering development impact fees, they're looking at the developments that are appropriate to their community, and so some communities have a lot of schools, and so their fee structure for the school might be a lot higher than something that we would have. Some cities might not have a landfill, or they might not have a wastewater treatment plant, and so you can't necessarily compare category to category. There is an exception, and that is with the, and I've quoted this source before, University of Berkeley has done, out of their Turner Center, has done an entire study on development impact fees, and they compared, this chart here is the single family housing value with the development fee structure. And so you can see in the chart of the proportion of fees, what proportion of the total home cost is the development impact fees that are assessed for a couple of different counties, LA, Sacramento, Roseville, Oakland, Irvine and Fremont, I'm sorry, those are not counties or cities. And when I looked at the average in Avalon, you can see where ours stacks up. And so what we did was, we took the median sales value history over the course of five years, divided that, found the average home price, took our fee structure, looked at the average of a thousand square feet, which is the typical housing unit size here, and it's quoted in our, our study, and we get approximately 5% development impact fee. And so 5% of the total 650,000 would be assessed onto that, so it'd be in addition to. And then you can see the proportion of those fee structures in the other ones. So the recommendation before you today for consideration is to hold the public hearing, adopt the resolutions accepting the findings of the nexus study and establishing the development impact fee and the capacity charge, introduce and waive further readings of both ordinances. Should council adopt, these fees would then go to a second reading, and then they would be adopted at both times, you know, within 60 days of the adoption of the second ordinance. And then I've got Dino here, as well as myself, to, for any questions before you open the public hearing.
Questions?
Question. Mike, on the chart you had comparing the cities, does that include school fees and such?
This is just for the single family housing value fee, so this is not with all of the other fees, this is just looking at, when we're looking at the, the total fees for residential fees, that's, that's this. So it would include, for us, yes, it would include all of those fees under that $32.16.
But it just doesn't include that, the...
But it just doesn't include that, the long-term unified fee?
No, that was not quoted in there, and I was using their methodology to, as the baseline, and all I did was calculate what that fee would look like if we were to apply it to the city of Avalon.
Thank you.
Counsel? Okay, then let's open the public hearing.
Carl Schmeck, Catalina Island Company, 150 Metropol. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, in late August 2019, Rob Walker and I addressed this council to outline the concerns the island company as a significant participant in the Avalon business community had with the proposed development impact fee ordinance. You'll recall that chief among our considerations in imposing this new special tax on businesses and residents was that the additional cost to all new development would, one, slow economic growth in an already constrained market, two, result in higher costs for customers and residents, and three, make new housing construction even more expensive, worsening the already severe shortage. Furthermore, we had specific concerns regarding the underlying assumptions of the report, which projected extraordinarily aggressive growth to both resident and visitor populations in the coming years. At that time, council wisely recommended that further study and community outreach was necessary before reevaluating this significant tax increase. And while a meeting with local business community was held in early October of last year, which included Jim, it was clear in that setting that others shared our apprehension about the ordinance, not least of which was the effect that these new fees, well typical in big sprawling suburban cities, would have on a small, unique island community such as ours. That group also requested that key comparison points to other relevant municipalities, relevant being a key word, as well as specific effects of this fee, including a retrospective analysis of recent development, should be closely examined and available for public review. Meanwhile, the impact report before you, the one dated January 2nd of 20, is still founded on dubious growth projections. Those include an assumed resident population growth that's two and a half times what, what it actually was the past three decades, which incidentally also requires that Southern California Edison release another 140 acre feet of water. Visitor growth meanwhile is assumed to surge in optimistic 30% in the next decade to all-time highs in spite of recent trends, and in the face of mounting costs for visitor-serving development posed by this new tax. These assumptions have a direct impact, impact on the nexus, and thus the costs that are detailed in that report. It's the Catalina Island Company's position that there remain significant questions regarding the appropriateness of impact fees for Avalon, and that council should carefully weigh whether this is the right time to adopt new taxes on housing and economic growth. Now that said, it's our understanding that this ordinance can be entirely superseded by a development agreement negotiated between the city and a private developer. It is absolutely imperative that this, that this exception be understood and codified if council, if council chooses to adopt the development impact fees. Otherwise, the city and future council members will be greatly restricted in their freedom to negotiate specific benefits in terms of any future large-scale development. This inclusion is crucial to protect the city's interests and acknowledge the unique nature of development agreement components such as affordable housing that are not currently recognized within the proposed ordinance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Carl. Other comments? Hey, you faked me out by going down that alley there.
I'm surprised we don't have any other comments.
Well, because staff did a good job contacting him and meeting with those who were concerned. That's all I got to say about that. So, counsel.
Are you going to close the public hearing?
Oh, let's close the public hearing. Thank you.
Question for Scott?
Yes.
Do we have to include the DDA provisions in this?
I don't believe we do. I've talked with Elizabeth about this, is also this sets the cap on fees, and the thing you can do is lower than this. So, this just sets the cap of fees.
And how often are these reviewed? The impact fees, how often do cities?
They're reviewed on an annual basis. We have to do a financial report, and then we revisit all of the projects also, and to make sure everything is in alignment. And the only other thing that I'd like to add is, just because council was looking at, or just adopted the accessory dwelling unit ordinance, California state law does not allow development impact fees to be applied to accessory dwelling units of 700, under 750 square feet. But any ADUs over 750 square feet would still be subject to development impact fees.
So, let's say we said that we don't think growth is going to be the 800, I guess that's the number. And let's say we said it's only going to be 100. What though, would that do to the fees? Does it, does it not, does it not necessarily reduce that fee that much because all those, those funds are still considered to be making improvements in all of those eight areas, correct?
Yes, Dino's probably the, the expert on that. I do know one of the significant drivers of some of the costs is also the projects that we have identified in the future plans.
Okay. But you understood my question, is that?
I did, yeah.
Oh, thank you.
It's a good question. So, I, I did a sensitivity analysis just for that, to answer that question, and I, I looked at the, the growth rate that's projected in the SCAG sustainability community, growth projections has 2030, a population of 4821, which is like a 2% increase, annual increase. And it's much higher than, than you've experienced over the last five years. So, I, I cut that down to 4,000, that's only 162 then, units. The growth rate is like down to 0.4%. And actually, what happens is because the way that the, the Nexus study is done, the fees would go up. The fees would go up by a couple of dollars per square foot.
Oh, okay.
In all categories except the general government, because general government is done strictly on the basis of the current level of service, the, the facilities that, that the city provides and the general government facilities, the city hall, so forth. So, since that is static, it's not changing, it's the government, it's the number found by dividing the, the total value of all the property by the current population. But everything else, it, it kind of moves together. So, you, you, you lower the, the population, the, what the, the population growth, what population growth then is responsible for goes down as well.
And when you looked at, never mind. Go ahead, counsel.
Michael, what is the overall percentage increase of what it was before to where we are now?
For the different categories, so you?
Or even if you put them, put them all together, what would the?
Yeah, so the way it was, if, if I were looking at the fee for dwelling unit, it would be a flat rate. So, originally, it was just over 27,000 for a single-family and for multifamily, it was about 33,000. Now, what we're saying, what we've done is we, we've done a whole housing audit, we've determined in various cities, or various areas of our city, and we figured the average housing size is approximately 1,000 square feet. So, let's say you go to build a 1,000 square foot house, under this new rate, it would be 32,160 for a 1,000 square foot house. Now, that would go up if you were to build a 15,000 square foot house, it would go down if you were to build a, a much smaller house. It's now, because it's assessed on the square footage, it's now assessed proportionate to the size of the house.
Right.
Which dictates the, the, the amount of impact.
I can believe that the houses on the flats are 1,000 square feet, I just can't believe that the houses on the hills are 1,000 square feet.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
The size of the house on the flats, because of the size of lots, you know, could be 1,000 square feet. But I think the houses that are built on the hillside and such are significantly larger than that.
Yeah, so what we did was, we took an, an average of where, different, different areas, I, I don't have the, the figure in front of me, but we took a look at, Amanda helped with that assessment, and so did Public Works. We took sample size of houses from different streets. Sometimes they were a little bit higher, some areas were a little bit lower, but what we found was the average was approximately 1,000 square feet.
So, the houses on the hillside realized that they were multi-unit too. So, there may be three or 1,000 feet, but it was three units. So, that's what got us down to that 1,000 foot. Okay? And then there was a lot of units on the flats that could be less than the 1,000 feet, okay? Because there were some multi-units there too. So, that's, you know, we used, we took and took and made a model and looked at that and tested it, and it got pretty close to that 1,000 feet.
So, if I'm doing this correct, if you have a, somebody builds a house that's 2,500 square feet, which is probably even on the low side of a house on the hillside, it would be $81,000 in impact fees? No?
Yeah, that sounds about right. So, you take the total square footage and multiply that by 32.
And it used to be 27 for that same house, now it's 81, 81 for.
Well, we never had them before.
That's a big increase.
Well, from the, I think he's saying from the initial.
Initial.
That it went from 27 to 81.
That's a lot. I mean, a 1,000 square foot house, yeah, I mean, that's not a very big increase, but...
It's not. The, the, so the issue though was, previous, the discussion happened, you know, if they're, regardless of size, if every unit was getting assessed the same fee structure, regardless of the proportion impact, there was no equitability in that process.
And, okay, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think you said something about, these are caps. So, let's say you wanted, I'm just going to say, if you wanted to build a 3,000 square foot home, and, I mean, I don't, there might be a scenario in which you can say, because I'm just going to build, I mean, whatever, those fees can be looked at on an individual basis, correct?
They can, you know, it, it gets a little muddied if you're trying to apply these fees equitably.
Right.
In, unless you've got a development agreement, and these are things that you can use to negotiate and, and determine other deal points, for the residential fee, it, it would be a much harder. We did ask, originally staff had proposed a cap, then the justification behind that was, if you build anything, let's say over a 3,000 square foot house, that you're not necessarily adding the proportionate number of people to that house. It's different if it's multifamily unit structures than it is on the single. The one thing that's interesting to note about this is, especially in a place with Avalon where land is very limited and people try to maximize the amount of, of building to the lot, this actually is an encouragement for smaller housing and more dense housing. Because if you go out and you build a 15,000 square foot house, do you really want to be assessed of 15,000 square feet of, of fees?
And this is new construction and also adding additional space to an existing residence?
Correct. Now, this is not like a small, you know, I'm going to do a minor renovation to my kitchen, and I'm going to reconfigure that, that's, I'm adding additional bedrooms, there's a threshold, once you hit that threshold of improvements, then it triggers. And again, accessory dwelling units, if they're under 750 square feet, are exempted from development impact fees per state law.
I have a couple of quick questions. Would the, these fees, and I, and forgive me, because this is clearly not my specialty, this, the whole conversation, and I've said that every time this has come before the council, this is a lot to digest every single time. That being said, if, if there were to be a development agreement for, let's say, a housing project or something, these fees wouldn't apply, that would be wrapped up into a development agreement, right?
So, the, the short answer is, it depends. So, if, I don't mean to pick on the island company, but let's say the island company wants to go and they want to build 50 housing units right outside city hall. We could apply that, or in the course of the development agreement, we could use that as negotiation power to say, you know, when you're proposing this, this is, this is part of the, the agreement. The city could either waive a portion of those, or we could waive all of those in lieu of other exchanges that could be made.
And would, was there much thought or consideration put in about, like, say, on the single or multifamily housing units, regardless of whether it's a development with 50 or just one property, one unit, for example? Any conversation about entitlement to the property for year-round housing? So, I think what I'm trying to say is, if I wanted to build a 1,500 square foot duplex on land, which is, which might be considered new development, if I agreed to an entitlement on the property that it would only, it would never be allowed to be a vacation rental home, was there any consideration for a reduction of impact fees?
I mean covenant, right?
I think that's what I'm saying, yeah, covenant.
Up to the mic, please, Dino.
You know, I think we talked about that sort of situation, but our thinking was that you build a house, any type of a house, you have to assume that it's going to be occupied year-round. And I, I think we had a discussion, well, you could, you could apply a covenant to it and saying it's only going to be a certain period of time, but who, who is going to, to monitor that? So, I think what you're saying is that you, you develop a property, put a covenant that says it's only going to be used half, half of the year. You know, I think that's, it's very difficult to, to, sort of thing to, to monitor, to keep track of. So, we assumed, we assume that every house is going to be occupied year-round.
I mean, the houses are going to be occupied year-round by someone. My, my thought process is that if I want to build a duplex to provide housing, I would, and, and, and I was willing to say, I could never apply, or the property itself could never apply for any sort of vacation rental or hotel-year-type license, would that be a consideration to negotiate the fees down? Because, for example, when we have to create additional housing for projects, this came up in your guys' forum last night, when we have to create, so, if you're going to do new development, the idea is that you, you have to create additional housing for, for the workforce. So, that, if you create that, that has a covenant, I think what you're calling it, on the deed that says that it has to be low moderate or some sort of income for, or low moderate income housing or whatnot for 50 years or whatever that is.
Well, it's affordable housing, you know, there are precedents for reducing fees for affordable housing, if you have a, that sort of a restriction, a deed restriction. We don't go into that in the fee study, but it's one of those special case things that the council could look at. And definitely, if a, if an affordable housing project were to be proposed, and you were to put a 50-year restriction on, on who could occupy it, and, and cut them a break on the fees, it goes to affordability, certainly.
Bob, you're itching to say something to me, and I want to hear it.
So, I think possibly how that would work would be, you'd set the fees as such, and that's the baseline, and then on a case-by-case basis, if a project comes up, they come to get the fees lowered, waived if they, you know, they offer that, you know? And then, so you can, let's make a deal, I'm going to get affordable housing, and here's the fee structure they have, just reduce the fee, and then council has that authority to do that.
And that affordable housing typically would have a development agreement as well, because you have tax credits and all that other kind of stuff.
I know, but if, but if, go back to what Steve was saying. So, if, if you want to build two 1,500 square foot units, you're talking $80,000 in development fees. But if I'm agreeing to keep that for workforce housing for 50 years, that, I, I'm not talking even only about a 50-unit complex, I'm talking about if I wanted to build a house and provide housing for the community.
Right. But, but then how do we, okay, but then there's no, we have no, we have no way to limit what those rents are either, so.
We do.
You do.
No, we're not talking, no, he's just talking, we're talking two 1,500 square feet places for rent. So, there's nothing talking about affordability there, and so we give someone a, a covenant. So there's nothing talking about affordability there, and so we give someone a, a covenant, we can't say, but you're not gonna raise the rent, because we gave you this great deal on your impact fees, they can still continue to raise rents.
Right, okay, which is a different topic, but if, if I, and I might just be splitting hairs, you can tell me to be quiet, that's fine. But if I were to ask Amanda, of the last, of the last four single-family homes that were developed from the ground up in the last five years, how many of, how many of those four units got CUPs for vacation rentals? That's my point. That if somebody actually wanted to create housing, was willing to have a restriction on the deed of their property to build housing for the community, is there a way to benefit them?
So Scott, maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it, at that point, it's the implementation of assessing the fees, so when they come in and they process their paperwork, we can have them make that request, and staff can either take that to council to say, would council be willing to waive the fees if this covenant happens, or empower staff to, the planning director, to make that determination and to enter into an agreement.
So what your ordinance currently provides is that if you do a development agreement, and it doesn't define how many units you can do, so you could, we could have a, we could have a provision where you're gonna set these fees, and then we do a development agreement for any development that, that comes through. That development agreement has to be approved by an ordinance of the city council, it's the same, so it would have the same impact as this ordinance does, if you are lowering, in other words, it's, it's, it's an equivalent action, it's an ordinance amending the ordinance, which would then set fees for that specific development. If you do not adopt these fees, then we are where we are right now, which is requiring, if we want to put fees in, to require development agreements as part of the planning process. And through that development agreement, then we negotiate for what the fees are. This action establishes what those fees are, is, is the maximum that we can charge, and then we negotiate for either the maximum or a lesser amount through the, the development agreement process, which is, again, adopted, which is an ordinance, which is two meetings just like this.
And I would have to honestly go back and watch the last meeting or two, but my issue all along is I thought the fees were high to begin with, and now they're coming back to us even higher than they were to begin with.
But if you believe the nexus, is what the fees need to be?
So the, the fees didn't really...
Fair.
Go up, they, they went up from the initial estimate that we brought in December, there was $32, and it, it went up, you know, 10 cents or 20 cents in the total fee structure. The, the bigger difference is, the blended rate took a slightly lower single-family with a slightly higher multifamily, and now instead of having two fee structures, we have one fee structure that is higher than the single, but lower than the, the multifamily. I, I know it's any once, but...
And I've been talking about hairs and straws, or whatever you just said, the, so going to the premise that, okay, so if I'm gonna build a home and I'm gonna want a CUP on it, which I have no guarantee I can get, correct, versus, which, which is not used on a year-round basis, versus a house that is occupied full-time, has more impact on us than a CUP that might be only rented six months out of the year? Another thing.
Fair.
Well, I'm gonna get us off of, and further, further questions, or comments?
I just wish there was a way to bridge the gap between a thousand-square-foot home and a 2,000-square-foot home, or 25, because you have a, a lot that you can build a thousand square-foot home on, it's gonna cost you 32,000, you have a lot that you can build the same house for, that's 2,500 square feet, and it's gonna cost you 81,000. It might only be a three-bedroom, it might be the same amount of people in the smaller one, but we're almost encouraging to build a house that's smaller, on the same size of the lot, and that difference between the two homes is significant. So I wish there was a way to make it a little more...
So that, that, that was the, the proposal that we had initially brought to the business community, and what we also brought in December, seeking direction from council, when we had asked initially to put a cap on the, the development impact fees. So what we were originally proposing was, once you hit 3,000 square feet, that the, you'd only be assessed the development impact fee up to the 3,000 square feet. We were told, no, that's not equitable, why should, if you're looking at things in a proportionate, and I understand, you know, but if you're building a 300-square-foot house, and I'm building a 1,500-square-foot house on the other, why would, why would I pay a, a fee that's proportionate to the square footage of the house, and somebody else benefits from a larger house, and only getting assessed fee? That, that was the argument before, and so we scrapped that idea, and we decided to eliminate the fee caps altogether, and allow for people, if they wanted to build, then they would just have to budget that into the cost of, of, of the house. We can go back, though, if council so desires, and re-take a look at this and propose a cap, if that's council's wish, I, I would like, just so that we could proceed forward with, uh, due diligence in terms of where we're at with our contract with Dino, and the amount of money that we've already spent on, on this, to let us, give us better, give us clear direction, and let us know what that cap you would like to see, and we can, we can re-revise that and bring that back to the, the second meeting in December, in February, or March, depending on...
We have to re, we may have to...
So we'd have to re-public notice, so we'd have to go through the whole thing again, so we could bring this back in March.
I have a request, Mayor.
Oh, please.
I'm gonna make a very honest statement, and I am gonna say that I am not comfortable making a vote on this tonight. I would like to, I did not have an opportunity from the time I got the agenda on Friday night to be able to really sit down with staff, and like I already said, this is a really rough item for me, because it's so far out of my, my knowledge base. So I would like an opportunity to sit with a few people that I would like to lean on for help and support in making a good decision for the community, and I'm respectfully asking that we not make a decision on this tonight. I personally am not asking for any more time from the consultant, I'm just asking for more time for me to meet with more advisors that can help me make a bet, the best decision for the community.
So moved.
Well, I...
She was just, that was an honest statement, it was.
I'm, I'm requesting to at least hold it over to the next council meeting.
Hold on.
What I would suggest is, is that the appropriate motion would be then to continue the public hearing, so we don't have to re-note it again until, and you tell us the date, and then we'll, and then we'll, we'll bring it back at that.
And, and I'm not suggesting that we have to have Dino make the trip back out, either. I, I just really need to do a little bit more homework.
I'll make the motion to hold, hold over the public hearing till the second meeting in February? That'll give you enough time?
Yes, please.
Okay. I'll, I'll make the motion.
A second.
Someone's got a second.
A second.
So bring it back.
Would that, I guess, how does staff feel about that?
Staff will carry out whatever council's desire and wishes.
I'm, I'm just hoping that, I know there's a motion in a second, I'm just hoping that, you know, you talk about kicking the can every once in a while, and we, sometimes we kick the can again, so, and I'm not quite sure, other than reading it thoroughly and talking to staff, I think anything else that you decide will probably have to go to somebody like Dino. I don't think, you know, if you're looking at some changes or whatever Steve might be considering, I think it is gonna cost us a little more money to bring them back, but that's okay.
I would have to respectfully say, if you wanted to, if you wanted to put, if someone else wanted to put forward a motion, I would have to decline in approving this tonight.
Yeah, I understand that as well.
So, but if somebody wanted to put that motion forward, I'm, I'm just speaking from my heart where, how I feel about this right now.
No, I appreciate that, and I just know that when, when they talk about the options we have to, to, to change, or make deals, or whatever, I think that's adequate, and I think we beat this up, but you all have, there's a motion in a second, so we'll call for the vote.
Three ayes, Councilmember Hapes, Castiel and Olson, one no, Mayor Marshall.
Thank you. Perfect.
And can, would you care to share where, where you're at on it?
Because I think we've, I think we've done a lot of great work, and we told them what we wanted them to come back with, they came back with it, the only difference is Steve wasn't here. And again, since we can do development agreements and all those kinds of things, I think, I think this is adequate, I think this is more than adequate, yeah.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
The reason I disagree is I think we're gonna throttle this ordinance, because what's not included in here is affordable housing, inclusionary housing, and when we start carving that stuff out, this may not make any sense at all. You know, I think, I think we need to look at that, well, I mean, how many, how many affordable units are there on the radar? I mean, how much the company's development gonna be? I mean, that's gonna be a DDA, and so there may not be any money flowing through that, so this might, this might be a moot subject anyway. I mean, how many units have we built in the last five years?
Yeah, so then let's keep, then let's keep them on the books, so we don't have five years, we have to go, the only thing that I see being built right now are you, are big, single-unit homes out at Hamilton Cove, three-story buildings out at Hamilton Cove. I don't know what we, what Amanda has on the books, if anybody's waiting for...
I'm waiting for water.
No, waiting for, and there's, well, and maybe that's some information you would want to know, is what kind of units are, are trying to go forward with, once the water, because I keep seeing they're gonna start letting the water out, so maybe that might be helpful as well. Okay, all right. Okay, item number six.
Okay, we're moving on to general business, and this is the lease agreement at Joe Machado Field for the snack bar services, and Dan Hunky is the one that oversees that lease.
Thank you, thank you for hearing this item tonight. In September of 2015, Ivan Leva was granted the food service agreement for the snack bar at Joe Machado Field, doing business as Verge Snack Bar. The agreement goes through December 31st, 2025, and has a five-year option to renew, and in the agreement, there's a 60-day termination clause, terminate the agreement. In short, the minimum service agreement for the agreement is to provide for food service during all recreation and school-related games, where attendance is over 30 persons, as well as all scheduled private and public events. Throughout the term, Ivan had explored some different opportunities, provided additional revenue to the business, those included, he brought forward and applied for a beer and wine license, he tried providing a lunch program during the summer months, where he was open to the public for that, he has done some off-site catering from the business site, and then he's looking to accommodate food vending as a potential revenue source, as a, an opportunity there for food vendors to be able to store and use as a commissary there, at the kitchen there. In late December this past year, Ivan came to staff and said he was having some financial problems in keeping the business going, he wasn't making it, and was looking to either terminate his agreement with the city, or also looking at possibly working with another partner in the community, Matt, Matt Affolder, to sell the business to. The, the sale, and I don't know all the ins and outs of it, but I think for the most part, would have included a fee that would cover some of the expenses he had, and equipment that he needed to, to get in there initially. Staff requested that he put something in writing to us to fulfill the 60-day clause that we had in there, and he did, and that was dated on January 2nd, and that's in your, in your packet. In a subsequent letter, on the 27th, there was some talk about, prior to it, there was some talk about this having to go out to RFP, and a subsequent letter on the 27th of January, he also put in a letter, it's also in your packet, in writing that, requested that if this were to go out to a formal bid, the RFP process, that he rescind his termination letter, keep the agreement, and continue to operate under the agreement. Tonight, we're asking three things for the council to consider. The first one is accept the letter from Ivan Leva dated 1/2/20, and approve his request to grant Matt Affolder an opportunity to complete the term of this agreement. I think in talking to Ivan again today, that would be his, what he'd like to do. Second would be to direct staff to solicit proposals for an RFP process, where it's open to the community, Matt would be involved in that process, or could be involved in that process. I have had a couple of people reach out to me that expect some interest in the opportunity, so those people would be taken into consideration there. And then the third one would permit Ivan Leva the opportunity to retract his notice to terminate the lease agreement. Matt and Ivan are, Ivan and Matt, sorry, are in the audience for questions they have, and I'm open to any further questions as well.
And I would note that if it is transferred, there is a 3% fee on the possibility of the transfer.
And do we know, Denise, am I missing it, how many people applied when we went out for RFP last time?
There were three, but one, one was eliminated, so only two came to council in 2015.
Okay.
And I just, yeah, I'll wait to see how the discussion goes.
Yeah, I was just curious how they all know, okay. Council, comments?
I think the playing field has changed between 2015 and now. The state of California imposed upon us the right to, ability for us to permit street vending for anybody, and one of the concerns is, is as we know, that a lot of people applied for that, too, is if you're vending food, prepared food, you need to have a commissary to do it, and this appears to be one of the only commissaries in town. So I'm, I'm, I'm kind of in favor of going out to bid, so I think there's, there was interest then, and I think there's still gonna be interest.
I have a question of Dan, of the food vendors that we've already, because there were three people interested, I think, there was Matt, and then the fruit, and then the tortoise, or whatever, and just for the, everybody to know, what happened to the other two?
All three are still in the works, Matt has been looking at the snack bar there at JMF for the commissary. The one and the two, he is looking towards, just because of the lack of a commissary, is looking towards prepackaged food, I think he's pretty close to pulling the trigger on his cart, I believe he, last I talked to him, it was just within the last couple weeks, I was looking at pulling out a small business loan and pulling the trigger on that, so soft pretzels, and things that can be heated up, that are prepackaged. And the third one I haven't heard from, it was cutting up fruit and needing, you know, the need for a commissary there.
Okay. And last time, we went out to bid last time, what were the dates? We went out for an RFP at what time, and then by the time it was resolved, how many months did that take, Denise? I'm sorry to...
I don't know if I have how many months it took, Mayor, sorry.
Because it was awarded on July 7, 2015, but...
We awarded August 18th of 2015.
2018?
No.
Oh, so...
August 18th of 2015 is when we came to the council to award the contract to Mr. Leva.
And the contract was signed on 2000...
Do we have a breakdown on what the city put into that, as far as equipment and cost, as what Mr. Leva put into that on his own?
I do not, Jennifer Monroe would have all that information, I know that, or I don't know 100%, but I thought I heard a passing comment that when Mr. Leva went in, he did put some additional, where are you, Ivan?
You wanna speak to what the improvement?
I was told that he had put some higher-quality equipment in there, but we'll have to verify that with Mr. Leva.
Hi.
Ivan, did you replace any of the equipment in...
I did, I ended up replacing the griddle, the two-burner stove that was in there, the freezer wasn't working, and when I took it over, it was empty, so I ended up buying everything, to pots, pans, and my initial investment was about $15,000.
Fifteen or fifty?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, okay.
And also you applied for a liquor license, and that process, which is caused...
At a later time, I ended up coming to city council, I got approved for that, I ended up applying for the Type 41 business license, and that was an additional, probably about $3,000, and I ended up spending from, for that, so I've been working with Matt, and in the sale was just... So I've been working with Matt and in the sale was just for me to recoup a little bit of what I invested and just pay off what I still owe.
Okay. And then let me ask a question of Matt because you're, you're also, are working on your, the vending. What impact, if you had that concession, what impact or whatever does that have on your vending cart?
Yeah, I actually have a prepared statement here that Ivan and I have both looked over. I would love to give my thoughts to the council on it.
Okay.
To answer your question to begin with, let me just clarify. You want to know if the commissary, if I am granted, how will this affect sidewalk vending?
Yes.
So if I am granted the lease, I have actually already, and I am the only sidewalk vendor that has applied for a health department permit now. I'm the only one that has put down the money. I'm the only one that's received my plans back. My vision is to turn that into a commissary, not only for myself, but also for the additional sidewalk vendors, because it is such a tough infrastructure problem. I cannot be grant, I don't know if that's going to be a possibility. It's all up to the health department. They have a very long, somewhat archaic code that we have to go through and check all these boxes, storage, it's quite an extensive list. So to answer your question, my vision is to open it up as a commissary to allow all the sidewalk vendors to be there. My first goal is to open it up as a commissary to allow myself to sidewalk that. If it pleases the council, I'd love to read my statement.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor and the council members for allowing me to share my thoughts on this. This is something Ivan and I have talked about a lot. And I wanted to start out by addressing that this really isn't about whether the snack bar should go out or not go out for an RFP. It is really about whether the city is going to accept the notice that was given or reject the notice that was given. And let me explain. The snack bar is still under lease with the current vendor. And what we are here tonight to find out is whether the city is going to follow its contractual obligation to the leasing and grant the transfer or reject it. You cannot reject or accept just part of a notice. In that notice, as you can see, it's given that Ivan is going to vacate and transfer the premises. If the city doesn't want to grant the transfer, which is within its right, and reject the notice that's given, it must allow the vendor the opportunity to continue the lease. This is spelled out really clearly in the lease contract between Ivan and the city. He is allowed to transfer the lease if the majority of the assets are transferred as well. The city does need to give permission for this to happen, but in the contract, it says that permission from the city should, quote, "should not be unreasonably withheld." If you look at the lease, Section 16, assignment and subletting, letter E, I have some legalese I would like to read. "Leasee may transfer this lease upon sale or transfer of substantially all the assets of the lease provided. Leasee first obtain leaseor's written consent, which shall not be unreasonably withheld, and provided leasee pays leaseor a fee transfer equal to 3% of the sale price with a cap of $30,000." Ivan and I submitted a notice on 1/17/20 that stated our intent and it was received by the city. We have been waiting on written consent from the city to allow the transfer so that we may pay this fee and continue the process. On the same day that the notice was submitted, Dan Hunky and I sat down and we talked about the transfer of the property. At no time was a possibility of the RFP mentioned. I asked to sign the lease paperwork. Dan gave me a copy of the lease to review. Capital improvements, access issues, event possibilities, alcohol rules, and really any pertinent details to myself taking over for Ivan were covered. It was, in all attending parties' consents, a done deal. Upon the notice of intent to sell and vacate being submitted and the conversation with Dan, I filed a transfer permit for the snack bar with the health department at a cost of $776 to myself. I also paid for a pest control quote and a contractor quote for the remodel that was needed. This cost me $250. Along with the liability insurance, the health department permit fees, $1,600 for the cart and the commissary, I've invested over $10,000 into this venue. As you know, only low-income people can apply for this. And this request for an RFP is really delaying my ability to get a health permit granted. It's causing a lot of undue financial stress and hardship. I could lay out lots of reasons why I am the best candidate to take it over. Serve Safe certified manager, 20 years' experience in the food industry. I have the capital and the vision to turn Virgin's snack bar into a long-term success.
Okay.
However, at this point, there are really only two legal acceptable options. Accept the notice and the transfer under the contract obligations outlined in the lease or reject the notice in its entirety as given by Ivan and myself and return the lease to him. If the city does want to put the snack bar out for an RFP, it will have to break its current lease.
Okay, thank you.
Were there any questions?
I don't think that's a fair statement.
Okay.
That last comment, I don't think is a fair statement.
Okay.
Just putting it out there.
Fair enough. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them for any council member.
A city question. So if we don't, don't accept his, Ivan's letter and what keeps Ivan, I'm not keeps, or what could, could Ivan then still work out a deal with Matt? Matt could be his manager and have his commissary there and everything else, right?
Yes.
According to still Section 16, we, he would still need to get permission from the city to do so.
We have to prove that, yes.
We have to prove, well, we're not even talking about transfer. If he just brings him under his umbrella and says basically Matt's an employee of his, oh, but we have, on the commissary part, we have to, we have to allow...
We have to allow that and what I would suggest is that if the city were interested in doing that or if the city were interested in actually transferring it to the new owner that we put in a provision that it'd be open to any, any sidecar vendor as a commissary because he has indicated that he would be open to every...
But there, but there are some issues with being a commissary with outside storage and all of that and our own space on our property. So that's a bigger deal, kind of. I mean, it makes it a little more complex.
The county would have to approve all that, yes.
Yes. And we'd have to approve that we would like to put storage units up there as well.
If the council were inclined to transfer that to Mr. Affolder, I think that a minimum he should, in our RFP that went out, that Ivan's, the hoops that he had to jump through, there are certain things in Section 5 of it, in qualifications, their experience in successfully operating and managing similar-type business, which I believe he already answered, which may, which may range in type as to include a small retail business, restaurant or catering. That was the first bullet. Second was fiscal solvency and the capacity to complete any necessary tenant improvements anticipated and must not currently be indebted to the federal government, state of California, or the city of Allen for any non-payment of taxes, fines, judgments. And there's another section of Section 7 or 6, which was the required elements. A description, we had asked, they had to give us what their menu was going to be. We had a lot of steps. So at a minimum, we should have some of the hoops that the RFP required from Matt. So it, and I wanted to clarify with Matt. Matt, did you say you spent $10,000 on your vending part of it or for the, because you were assuming you were going to get this transfer?
The breakdown, I can give it to you. After the conversation with Dan, I spent roughly about $1,500 or so on just making sure that it would work, the health permit transfer fee and other things. The remaining $7,000 to $8,000 was spent on the sidewalk vending permit. Excellent question.
It's unfortunate that you proceeded forward without getting actual, Dan only, can only provide you the steps that the city needs to take and it's not final until this board up here makes that final approval.
And I can absolutely appreciate that.
I'm sorry that you render that impression and that you've spent some monies. So I don't know how they're going to vote. I'm not on that part.
Yeah, and I can absolutely appreciate that and it might have been my mistake. I just wanted to let it be known. Thank you.
And then somebody, I think it was Mayor, said something, do we have anything if Ivan no longer wants to do it? He has to be in compliance with all terms of his lease and there's some personal things that I, there's a section of it that I would have to speak to Mr. Leva about.
Okay.
That he could be in default.
But could, can I just get a clarification because I think some of Mr. Affolder's comments diluted this? If Mr. Leva, as the lesssee, wanted to terminate his lease, he could do so with 60 days' notice?
Yes.
Okay. So you do have the right to terminate your lease with 60 days' notice?
And he basically gave us that.
Whether you transferred it or not?
Correct.
But what I understood you to say is that you'd rather not just terminate your lease, you would rather transfer your business to recover your costs.
Correct. And because I've invested so much time on it already, I know what it takes to try to run it. I've tried every single thing and I failed. And I think that Matt is the most qualified to take it over. He's way ahead of the process already. He's trying to do the vending thing. That's what I was trying to do. Unfortunately, it didn't happen for me. So he basically has what I need and then vice, and vice versa.
Right.
So at this point, he is more qualified and he'll, he'll make it work with the vending permit part of it. He'll be generating more revenue from that than just from opening for games because for me now, if there's one soccer game, I'm only up there for an hour and a half to two hours. So by the time I prep and cook and everything, at the end of the day, it's costing me more to open than to stay, to keep closed, but my contract says I have to open and I have to go open. But every time I do, right now, I'm just losing money. And with Matt having the vending cart, vending permit, that's going to be probably 80% of that business.
Okay, thanks.
And the previous lesssee didn't work for her, like Denise and I were saying. Last time it was successful was when Kenny Trainer had it. Barefoot Kenny Trainer. So, so that's been a long time.
I have a couple of questions. So Scott, according to Mr. Affold, we have two options. According to our staff report, we have three options. Who's correct?
So the question is whether you want to accept the letter as, you have an option to, number one, accept the letter that he's transferring it. And then what would happen with item number one is we would be given an opportunity to complete a lease with Matt. They just can't do it. We have to have a formal document where we lay out the terms of the lease. We'd make sure we did our due diligence, make sure that he met all the terms of the RFP and that that was acceptable to us. The lease does say that we can do that in our own sole discretion. And so there is language that says it's in our sole discretion. Somewhere else, it also says it cannot be, the transfer, if it's a transfer, cannot be reasonably, unreasonably withheld. If we want to look at the transfer, we have absolute right to, to demand things. The second thing is if we do number two, the council would have to accept the January 2nd, 2020 letter as an absolute notice of termination of the contract. So you'd have to look at that letter and you, you would have to make the finding that that letter is a notice of termination of the contract. It's an unconditional notice of termination. You, you would accept it. And then, and there, obviously, they have an argument that it was not a unconditional notice of termination. And then lastly, number three is to just, just accept that, that that is neither a notice of termination or a, or a transfer and you're not going to do anything on the transfer. He just continues to operate it. At that point though, we would have to look at whether he is in compliance with the lease, all terms of the lease, and there may be some issues there. That would give us the right to terminate the lease.
Or we could amend the existing lease or write a new lease to cover the new uses.
You could amend, yes.
The new uses, is that what you said, Ollie?
Mm-hmm.
I would propose that as well.
That meaning commissary?
Any commissary, I'm going to make sure the rents are, commence through what the use of the building is.
At some point along the way during the, the street vending permit discussions, somebody on the council, I don't know who along the way, had, had said that that was, or they felt that that was the perfect location for a commissary for all the street vendors. And that has in fact stuck with me, which I think it's, you know, again, we talk about so few city assets that we have. That is one of them. And it seems like that would be a reasonable accommodation that the city could put into the lease. Where I sit with this personally, and I'll just throw it out there for council discussion, is that I don't think that it is unreasonable to allow Mr. Leva to transfer the lease. However, regardless of who he transfers it to, I believe that they need to, they need to pass through the requirements of what the RFP was that Mr. Leva originally had to do. So as Denise had gone through the qualifications and whatnot, I believe the city would need to assure all of those things, just as Mr. Leva did when he was granted. So I'm not willing to transfer the lease until the city staff comes back to us saying he's met all the, anybody has met all of the qualifications. And then obviously to, at whatever point to add that use for commissaries in.
If that's the, because there are two options. One is to keep the current lease, keep the current lesssee, but restructure the lease to allow the commissary with, it's still going to be with the lesssee, Ivan. Or the other one is to allow the transfer to be, to, to take place, which would result in a commissary, still going to result in a commissary. It's just do you want to take Ivan off the lease or not?
I think if Mr. Leva is, is requesting to be removed from the lease, I think he has the opportunity. But I also, I, I don't, unless city staff says that they've already vetted the, the applicant transfer and feel that they've met all the qualifications, I don't, I want to see that in the staff, I would want to see that in the staff report before making that agreement.
Because, yeah, because I, it seems in a way simpler to do the transfer if Ivan wants out and...
Yeah.
And Matt's been doing all this work, but with the caveat that you're saying and Denise is saying.
I just want to clarify that this is, this, the reason it's here tonight is, is all on me. And Dan brought it to me and I said, well, I need to see what the lease has to say. I looked at it and said, oh, yes, he can transfer this. And I don't know, within 24, 48 hours, I tapped Dan in a meeting and I said, hey, I've been thinking about this and I think it really needs to go out to an RFP. We should give the, everybody the ability because I, I just didn't, it didn't feel right that I could just transfer to somebody else when there could be a lot of people out there that might want to put their information in. So I feel bad that Matt has invested some money. It's put Dan in a sticky spot and that's why it's here tonight.
But we did write it in the lease, the section of the transfer. And, and that is, that's fair to Mr. Labor right now, that, that is an option in his lease.
Right.
I would also recommend that in, if we proceed with a new lease, with some provisions that we look at that section and maybe word that differently or maybe not offer a lease transfer, but we have given him the opportunity in his lease to do that.
And we offer lease transfers on all of our, all of our other properties as well.
Right. But I agree, there's, you know, it's the same as, dare I bring it up, Casino Dot Cafe, that, you know, there, there is a lot of wish that that will happen, but not a lot of, not a lot of people coming forward wanting to do it.
And Denise had to bring this to the council because if you're considering the transfer, that's the council's decision because the council approved this lease. So the council has to approve any transfer.
I just want to share, at this point, Mr. Affolder has not been vetted to the, you know, the RFP, the existing RFP. So if that's something that council wanted, we would do that, we'd bring that back with those findings and then a new lease at that point if, if we remove forward that way.
Mr. Affolder, are you in agreement with that, what Dan just said?
Absolutely. I want it to work.
Good, absolutely. Perfect.
And could I add just one more statement?
In your head.
See, I tried to do a guide and it doesn't work.
Trying to help him.
I just wanted to say all capital improvement costs for the commissary will come out of my own pocket. I'm not going to be asking the city for any of those capital improvement costs.
Well, then the question is, when, when, typically when someone takes over a piece of city property and moves out, then if they leave, like we had the old equipment, I'm assuming we trashed it or, or...
Surplused it.
Surplused it. And then if... Surplused it. And then if, if, if right now, if we just said, you're done and get out, he would be able to take his property with him?
No, we have something in the lease that says.
No, yeah.
Tell him, okay.
This needs to be...
I just asked.
If we're going to be transferring this, we need to go inspect the premises.
Oh, sure. No, I get all that. I was just about...
If it's going to be open as a commissary, maybe, maybe that's going to change the deal. We still have to do the due diligence. So the question is, I think we have some direction to look into the transfer. When would you like to see this back?
Well... Two weeks.
As long as, I mean, they're the ones that are going to have to work it out and get it through Denise and get it in a staff report. So the sooner the better. You know, spring is coming and everybody wants to move forward, so.
I'm sure Mr. Honke can vet this within two weeks and we'll have it back on the 18th.
But is there agreement kind of the way we're going?
As long, I think we need to revise section three and section four.
Section three and section four.
One is a rent, one is a use.
Of the lease?
Of the lease. We need to incorporate the new use.
Okay. And the commissary type words and that kind of thing. Okay, okay. All right. We have direction. Great, thank you.
I think Mr. Greenlaw's been waiting.
Sorry.
So item number seven?
Yes, sir.
Okay. This item, before you authorize the emergency wall repair contract with Boulder Contracting Company at the Crescent Avenue stairway. Let's see if I got this light up here. So the location is right at the top of the Crescent Avenue stairs, right above the yacht club, okay? And as everybody knows, there's an active slide that's been heading down the roadway all the way since the February event of 2019, when the rain events happened and the hillside gave loose. And so I have a little background to read, to be able to provide everybody at home and the audience here. So during the February 2019 rain event, a landslide began to develop below the Crescent Avenue stairway at a location above the yacht club. Approximately 100 cubic yards of earthen material below the wall rotated and slipped approximately six, six feet in elevation. Since that event, anytime a significant rain event occurs, additional material slips downward in the slow progression with the amount of material movement relative to the, the amount of rainfall and intensity of the rainfall. So staff consulted onsite with the city's on-call engineering consultants and determined the material needs to be removed, but at that time, that the wall provided, provides the foundation for the stairway was still competent. The conditions, the conditions remained the same until rain events late in 2019, where additional earthen material slipped and exposed the lower wall embedments. So the piles that go, the steel H piles that go in, and they're put into case on, which is just concrete, is a hole drilled into the rock, and then the H pile goes in and gets encased in concrete. So that's a case on. And that is approximately one and a half times the length of what you see above. So if there's 10 feet, it's 15 feet in the ground. But now that's getting exposed with this latest slides that happen with the latest rains. Okay? And so there's determined that corrective action needed to be taken to protect the integrity of the wall. The contractor is a specialist in this type of work and has performed multiple large projects of reinforced wall systems and avalons. So everything you're seeing in the terraces, Boulder Contracting put those in. So they're done a lot of work here on, in the city. Luckily, the contractor has already mobilized on the island, completing similar work on another private project, and will be available to perform the emergency repair. This mobilization and availability provides a significant strategic advantage and cost savings for the city. You know, think of putting a full set of plans together with somebody that's not familiar with the work, did not do the work, and has to mobilize all the equipment on the island. The contractor's already here, knows, built the, actually built the original project. A preliminary scope of work was determined along with a preliminary ballpark estimate when we went out to the field, again, just this last Monday. The city's on-call consultant is now verifying that scope of work and producing construction documents, which are scheduled for completion by mid-February. It's one of the things that doing it with this contractor allows us just to look at the as-built and then make construction documents by, by making alterations to those. And then we can proceed ahead without putting a full set of bid documents together. So that saves us additional money. Once the construction document finalized, a final cost and contract can be negotiated with the contractor. The contractor will be available by the end of February, so I'd say start construction by March. And then some materials need to be ordered, so there'll be some tiebacks that go in underneath there. And so those need to be ordered, and those take three or four weeks. So that's why we're in front of you tonight, to ask to proceed ahead with this, so that we can get those materials ordered. And then we can do, once the, the scope is finished, the contract documents are finished, we can move ahead. We're negotiating with the contractor. Rough estimate is on not to exceed $100,000. We anticipated that work needed to be done in this area when we put the budget together last year, and we put $10,000 for planning. And then the bulk of it was going to be in the next year. But since we had this additional slip out, there was $90,000 putting into the next year. And what we want to do is advance that forward by our budget policies, allow that under budget policy D2, to advance that to the current year. And so what we're doing is, this was budgeted for, but it's in, the construction's in a future year here by about three or four months' time. So we're saying, bring that back to this year, and then we, we would match what we had budgeted, $100,000. We did go to the, the last planning commission meeting. We did go in front of the planning commission, and we were approved for the coastal development permit for that in the January 2020 meeting. So any questions on that?
So when did they build those stairs?
That was built in the 90s.
Oh, okay. All right.
How, how long do you think the project will take from the moment of start to completion?
The contractor is estimating two weeks, but, you know, we're up there on the hillside, so, you know, let's give them, you know, two to four weeks. The scope of the work is to put two or three tiebacks right where the caissons are, so that will hold that from slipping out. And so those tie back the wall right at that point where we're starting to see that exposure. Also, that 100 cubic yards that I talked about, we're going to push that over the edge. We'll protect the road while we do that with some chain link in front of it. We'll drop that material on the road so that it doesn't continue being a hazard. And we'll have loaders and dump trucks on the road pick that up and, and remove that. So both things will happen at once. We intended just not to do the tiebacks when I originally put the budget scope together, but now that we have to do some repairs to the wall, since this contractor's here and is that specialized contractor, he's going to do that tieback at the same time. And he's very comfortable beating up on that slope with the excavator, too. And he has a plan to do it.
So the more, if it rains more and more, the scope of work gets worse and worse?
We think that we're at the rock level right now, talking to Geotech. But we do need, since we do have that exposure, we do need to make some tiebacks now that we see that the caissons are exposed there. So that's what we're doing, so that, we don't think it's going to advance much deeper than it is, but since we have that exposure, we need to make sure that the wall is good at this point. Okay?
Okay. Questions, council?
I'm prepared to make a motion.
And just so you know, there's two actual, two, two provisions that were authorized. One is the emergency provision that requires four votes. The other is under municipal code requires three votes.
And the emergency measures, maybe we can find emergency funds to pay us back? Or no?
Yes, this was, this was put in for OES funding. We haven't heard back whether we're going to receive that yet.
Oh, okay, thanks.
Okay, but we did put it on the damage survey report that went to OES for the 2019 February events.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve recommended actions one through four.
Second.
Okay, call for the vote. Well, you, you did go in.
I know, I was waiting for him to turn it out. I was wondering after I started that. I was panicked.
No, no.
What's that?
A break.
Oh, we're going to take a five-minute break. Thanks.
Time for cocktail.
Do we, we didn't call for the vote?
Yeah, we did.
Oh, we did? Are we all lies? Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't hear Gabby. It's okay.
It's okay.
Alex, are we on?
No.
He's working on it. He is.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, council. This is a staff report to give you an update on where the planning commission is on our favorite topic of transient rentals. The goal of this update is to update you and the public on our intention to transition our current land use entitlement process for transient rentals or conditional use permit, as everyone calls them, CUPs, to transition that from a land use entitlement to a license. And we've pretty much had a consensus, both from the council and the planning commission, that they're in favor of changing this process to a type of license, so it doesn't travel with the land for all new applications. So then that leaves us, what do we do with the current ones? And I'd like to just actually read what's in the staff report for the benefit of the public, if that's okay? So, in addition to recommending transitioning the transient rental entitlement to a license, the commission also recommends establishing a reasonable amortization period. And I want to clarify that a lot of times when people hear the word amortization, they means that you're gonna take it away completely, that it's coming to a dead stop. We're not saying that. It's an amortization period for the transition from the existing to the new. The recommended amortization period to city council is to allow the existing permitted use to continue without change for the current owner and through the first sale. The second buyer would receive a land use entitlement that would revert to the license upon the third sale. The goal is to ensure that the current owner continues to have the entitlement to the land use, transient rental, and have the right to sell the entitlement to the next owner. Because our obligation is to the current owner. They got an entitlement for, to use a land use of transient rental, but they also got an entitlement that they could sell with the land. The next owner would purchase the entitlement, knowing that when they sell the property to the, to the third owner, it would revert to the license upon sale and would not be attached to the land. So the license would be granted to the owner and not attached to the land.
And the owner would have to go, apply for the license under the procedures then established.
So then, the other question that council asked the planning commission to work on was to come up with a plan for what do we want to do about saturation? How do we want to try to spread out this land use in an equitable manner in our community? I think everyone accepts, most everyone accepts, that transient rental are an important part of the amenities that we offer to our visitors. Coastal commission has said you have to have some type of short-term rentals in the coastal zone because it's an affordable way for people to enjoy the coast. Of course, all of Avalon's in the coastal zone, we're so lucky. So, and we are. So the saturation options that the planning commission came back with are the following. Option one was to cap the transient rentals at their current number, plus a one-on-one-off approach per street. So if you had 15 on a street, it's capped out, you couldn't approve any more on that street until someone gave one up. If an owner, with an exception, if an owner was planning to make a residential unit available to a year-round tenant, there would be an additional transient rental permit permitted. So in other words, if you had a duplex and you were gonna make one of those units a year-round rental, you could be exempt from the cap. Option two, cap transient rentals by a certain percentage on each street with exclusions for highly saturated condominium properties, Hamilton Cove and Bahia Vista were mentioned. If the location of an application was over the percentage ceiling, city could limit to a one-on-one-off approach. Under a percentage cap, an applicant could still apply for the entitlement if, again, they were providing permanent year-round housing on the same parcel. City staff analyzed the saturation of the various streets, thank you, Senator Rosio, and two streets were at 43%. The commission recommends that the council set the cap as 43%. Option three, retain the status quo on saturation with the new licensing scheme. And our current saturation is we look at the house, the immediately adjacent properties to the applying property and determine how it's going to affect just those immediately adjacent property. The planning commission would then switch to the licensing scheme described above, which would impact saturation since it would require license holders to reapply after a designated amount of time and could include more stringent expiration and revocation procedures. There would be no express changes to how transient rentals were approved as it related to saturation. So I provided you this evening with the real numbers of how many transient rentals we have out in our community. And so, with your permission, I'd like to read this for the public as well.
Please.
The numbers, okay. According to the 2019 Department of Finance website, there are 2,294 housing units in Avalon. There are 399 documented active transient rental properties. These are the granted CUPs and the grandfathered properties, or 17.4% of the total housing units. The breakdown of transient rental properties is, there's 178 in Hamilton Cove, there's 49 in Bahia Vista. The others 172 are scattered about the remainder of Avalon with the highest concentration, concentration on the flats, or 152. The saturation of the flats ranges from 14% in the 200 block of Catalina to 43% in the 200 block of Clarissa and Eucalyptus. Three, the 300 block of Clarissa is 38%. The 300 block of Descanso is 27%. And the 200 block of Descanso is 19%. The terraces, Marilla, Whitley, Beaudelou, Los Lomas, Olive Hill, and East Whitley are all lower percentages. Maiden Lane is the true exception, with five of the nine units being transiently used, or 55%. This does not include Seaport Village. Of the 399 documented active transient rental properties, 262 are conditional use permits and 110 are active grandfathered. In other words, they are legally non-conforming. 13 are banked while being year-round, 13 are scheduled for revocation due to non-compliance. Of the 13 scheduled for revocation, eight are conditional use permits and five are grandfathered. Since the inception of the CUP process in 1993, the city has approved 312 conditional use permits. As of our most recent data, 262 are active. And I'd just like to say, as of about 2:00 this afternoon, we thought we had 14 scheduled for revocation, but someone kindly sent in $8,000 of arrear TOT, so we're happy for that. So I think what the commission is hoping to hear from the council is if you have a preference on a way to handle saturation and if you have a preference or opinion about how we're proposing to do the amortization of the existing rental permits.
And I would note that when we were discussing the amortization at the planning commission meeting, several meetings ago, CIBR sent us a rather strong letter about amortization. And we met with them, Amanda, myself, and Michael met with them, and they are fine with the amortization provision. We, we explained to them that current owners get to keep it, people that buy it get to keep it, and it's only the, the third owner. So basically, everyone that has it and anyone else that buys it has it. That kind of alleviated their concerns because it could be 50 to 100 years. If property doesn't transfer, it remains in effect, and they were, they were fine with that.
Okay. I don't know that I am so fine with that.
Well, yeah.
But, but, and so, let's talk about amortization first. So, yeah, so it could still be, it, it would still, they could still have a transient rental on it for 300 years if it's, if it stands that long, by being transferred three times. However, we still have the going back too, but if they're not paying or they're not da-da-da-da-da, we can revoke it?
They'd still be subject to be, they would still have to comply with the rules, which are they, they need to pay some TOT every year, they need to renew their business license in order to keep their permit active. So yes, that would still apply.
And so what you will see in the next upcoming months is we're gonna have probably one or two planning commissions dedicated exclusively to revocation of the people that haven't paid or haven't complied. We're gonna go ahead and have a public hearing to revoke those CUPs to reduce the number further.
Okay.
But the, do those, oh gosh, where's the number? Do those 100 or so grandfathered ones?
110 active grandfathered.
Yeah, do those fall within the amortization as well? Or are those, does that grandfather mean something different?
Well, Scott can answer this, but the grandfathered ones are legally non-conforming use, they're not a conditionally permitted use. So I think the...
It's going to apply to all of them.
It'll apply to all.
It's gonna apply to all of them, and the revocation process also applies to the grandfathered ones. In other words, if you, if you, if you're not using it and you're not paying taxes on it, then we're gonna go ahead and revoke that CUP.
I just have a hard time with grandfathers. Maybe because I don't have any.
I think, I think they did a great job on the amortization. I think that's very fair. It allows the person who currently has it to be able to transfer it, and it's full disclosure, the person purchasing the property gets it, but they allow, but they know that it's gonna go into a license when they sell it. So it's like full disclosure for everybody, we're not taking anything away from anybody who has it now. I, I'm, I'm all for that.
Yeah, I think it was well thought out.
And option number three?
No, I'm talking about just the, we're gonna take them separately, amortization and then saturation. So I, I'm great with what they've come up with for amortization.
I don't, I just don't understand why it has to go for the third sale.
Well, the, the first sale is the current owner.
Mm-hmm, right.
So that's one sale.
And then you get mine, and then you can hold it on...
Oh, I see.
No, no, it's, it's, it's only, it's only one sale. It's only one sale. Someone has it right now, they've already purchased it. There is one sale, they sell it to X. That person buys it knowing that they can use it as a transient. But the minute they, they sell it, they're done.
Right. Okay. Okay. I think we're all kind of, we're kind of copacetic on that one. Let's talk about saturation. So Hamilton Cove doesn't care if every one of those turns out to be a CUP? Bart?
It's written into our CCNRs.
I'm sorry, step up, I'm sorry. Could you, I don't know how many units you have out there total.
185 units. It was written into our CCNRs when it was put in place that we would allow for short-term rentals. So no, we don't.
So it could be, there are the New Years and your Moms, and Norris Bistens, there could be 100 and, all of them could be...
There's only seven left that...
There's only seven left that don't have CUPs? Oh, wow. Okay. So whether they use, okay, and again, is it whether they use it or not?
Yeah.
It still comes back to us?
We still have to apply by all the exact same...
Yeah, okay. What I have a problem with, but I brought it before, and we had a joint meeting of the planning commission, and Bart was sitting to my right, was the amount of money that all, we can get, they can get away keeping that CUP and giving us 12 bucks. That is wrong. That I really have a problem with.
I think one of the goals that we were hoping to see with the license is because people have invested so much in the CUP and because they see it as an asset that they can sell, then yeah, they're, they'll pay just that little bit. And I, I agree with you, Andy, it, it doesn't seem to work from the city's perspective.
Right.
But I think with the license, they have no reason to even apply for it if they're not going to use it, because it, it's not giving them an asset that they can sell.
I understand.
So I, so I, I agree with you on the existing ones. I don't know, Mr. Campbell would have to answer how we could make that change for the existing ones.
No, and that's, and that's exactly it, Amanda, is for the next 150 years that I hold on to mine and then that another person gets for 150 years and I only rent it for $12 a year, that's wrong.
So the, the planning commission considered that, and their recommendation is not to put a, a minimum, a minimum date on it. So that was, they, they debated that, and part of that was, if it's only used one or, or two days a year, then the neighbors aren't being bothered by the CUP being used, because they'll get a lot of complaints about their parties and, and stuff like that. And if it's used maybe one or two days to kind of keep it alive, the, the general thought was that that's not in itself eliminating long-term housing.
No, I agree with that.
And there are a few of those, and I cannot remember the exact count, maybe half a dozen that pay the $12 a year that are actually occupied year-round. They're, people live there. It's the home they own, they live in it, but they're keeping the CUP active because they want to rent it for the two weeks they go on vacation. And so it's not necessarily that the house is sitting there empty and we're only getting $12 a year out of it. Some of them are actually owner-occupied.
Yeah. Well, first of all, there's no way we should ever get $12, because I don't know anybody that rents a place for $100 a night, number one. Okay, and under the license scenario, that could happen in 300 years, depending, all the, the cost of the license is only as much as it costs us to do the license process. So it could be $33, or the price of a business license, it would be something that inexpensive.
Well, one of the options, and the planning commission was gonna roll up their sleeves, is the license process would have some opportunity for public notice and, and hearings. And so we're gonna have to look at what's the cost of that whole process, and we're gonna set the fee based upon the actual cost, which is includes if it goes to a planning commission, the cost of noticing, the cost of staff time preparing. So it's not gonna be the $38, it'll, it'll probably still be around what the, what the fee is right now for a CUP, because if they require public noticing, we're, we're still gonna have to do all that stuff. And that includes staff time, attorney time, noticing time, sending out all the notice to, to the public and stuff.
Well, the, I'm, I'm gonna respectfully disagree with you, Mr. Campbell. Currently, the public notice fee is like $247 is what we charge, and that kind of covers staff time and postage, because we're now paying, you know, full freight postage for our public notices. And part of the cost in the current CUP process is what we charge for coastal development permit. And our hope is that the coastal commission's gonna be happy that we're continuing with our short-term rentals, and so that process where you have to do a coastal development permit, you have to send a notice to the coastal commission, the, our goal and our hope is the process will be a little simpler, and so the fee should be, I would, my goal was to get it down to less than half.
Yeah, unless coastal commission tells us that.
Okay.
If they still have to be processed with local coastal permits.
Right, right. Okay, but if it's a license, every year they have to pay that amount?
No, no. It's only one year for the application, because that's the cost of actually granting the license. After that, it's just gonna be a...
An annual fee.
An annual, small little fee. So it's, it's the first fee in actually getting the entitlement.
And the coastal commission supports short-term rentals when we sit here and say we need year-round rentals? Because they want everybody to have access to the beach or something, right? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, the coastal commission hasn't liked some cities that have tried to, to limit these.
Right.
The former city manager, Ben Harvey, has been wrestling with the coastal commission on Pacific Rose's limitation of CUPs.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Okay, so we got the amortization. We like the...
Saturation.
And then the saturation, yeah, sorry. Well, you made a, they made a recommendation for 43, as a, 43% is a cap. And, and that's staying, okay, so, so where that 43 is, 43% on that one street, those are active CUPs or those banked ones and every other kind?
We did not differentiate between grandfathered CUPs or banked, because they could send us a letter tomorrow and put it back in the transient market. So we didn't try to, to gauge to what extent it's being used, is they've got an active permit, so we included it in the count.
So some of those could be being rented on a year-round basis, they're just maintaining their CUP?
Could be. Okay. And because those... And because those were the two most saturated streets, that's why the commission said, let's pick, that is the maximum.
Right. Okay, so you, okay, so that is the max, yep. Okay, there's no hidden ones. Okay. Mayor Cotan, you have a thought?
Um, well, I was, my first question was going to be, where, where was the commission leaning towards in any of these options? But it sounds like the only one that they recommended was that we set it at a 43% cap.
They, they talked pro and con about all three. And I, the, I believe there was a lot of talk about some type of cap, but in a way that where you weren't going to completely close the door. That's why they talked about the one-on, one-off, or where you're requiring, allowing for year-round housing to be included. The easiest for staff to enforce would be option two. And I'd like to point out, too, that when we say by a certain percentage on each street, we broke it down by block.
Yeah.
So it'd be like by the 200 block, the 300 block, the 400 block.
I mean, personally, I, rather than put a cap on the transient rentals, I would be curious to say for, you know, a period of time, let's see what the licensing does, and stay with option three, which is retain status quo, and then see what the licensing does. And, and just, I, I honestly didn't know, I did not think that we would have that consensus on the amortization and the licensing, so that, to me, is very exciting. I'd like to see, I'd be interested to see how that works first before putting a, a cap on saturation.
But when? We may never see licensing in our lifetime.
Why?
I mean, unless you sell a condo at Hamilton Cove.
Actually, what, what, what the licensing is going to do, assuming it goes through, is automatically going to cap the number of what you call CUPs. It's not going to cap the number of homes being used as transient rentals.
Mm-hmm.
It may, it, it, okay, because you're capping the CUPs because you're eliminating the entitlement of the CUP. But the number of homes that may be used as transient rentals may go up if you do not put any type of cap on.
Right.
Because you may get people coming in to get their licenses. Once it's, you know, if it's an easier process.
And again, the only way the planning commission can regulate that is if either there is a cap, or we stick to the current thing about the, the saturation around where somebody else lives.
And all, all three of these are intended to somehow control a saturation.
Right.
Where the areas that are already carrying the largest number of rentals would be capped, but other areas that are below what the maximum is would still be able to have properties approved.
And we almost have a quorum of the planning commission here.
Okay. Yolanda, Yolanda is behind you, Amanda, maybe she, she wants to say something. Thank you, Amanda.
Yolanda Montanas, good evening. First off, I'm so excited, because we've been asking this for years. Staff did a wonderful job, Amanda, Rocio. I'm all about facts. So I was having a really hard time, I'm stopping something and getting rid of something, and if I didn't have the data in front of me. And I think Rocio and Amanda did a great job getting it to us, and that why, that is why you guys came to us and asked to look into the CUP running with the land and saturation. We all decided on the licensing and the amorti, amortization, because it was very touchy, because it's somebody's, it goes with their land, so, so it's hard to take something back from somebody that they own, and that, that CUP runs with the land. So that's how we came up with the one-time sale and the licensing, which I think is progress. You have the three options of the percentage, cap on the percentage, the status quo, and the other one, I, can you refresh my memory? Well, the reason you have three is because we wanted to give you some options, and we all, honestly, we agreed that those were great options, because we collectively couldn't come up with a quorum with one.
Oh.
And the reason being is, once we got all the facts and information, and it's still not completely factual, because there's the grandfathered ones, that we don't even know if somebody's living in there year-round, if it's rented to a local, we don't know how that's, that is being used. So you can't really say that that's 100 CUPs actively, because we, we haven't gotten there yet. So with that being said, I feel like, wow, it wasn't as crazy as everybody thought it was. So, I mean, if you look at all the data you have in front of you, it's not as bad as it, I think the, the town thought it was, with the numbers that you have here.
Yeah.
So that is why you got the three options, and not because one was better, but it was because we all couldn't agree in, on one particular item. Thank you. And I thank staff again.
Good evening. Just a, a question for staff in calculating the saturation percentage. I wondered whether that was by parcel, by number of units, or by square footage? Number of units.
Okay. And I have a question on option three. Oh, go ahead, come on up, Bart.
We've gone around and around this at several planning commission meetings for almost a year. Some of the things that come up, such as, we should pay, if you have a CUP, you should pay the city so much money per year. I'm a person that lives in my house year-round. I wanted the option to, if I went on vacation for a week, I could rent it out for a week, so therefore you'd only have 12% of whatever I got for that week. There are many people like we're saying, right now, when you apply for a CUP, it's $3,200. For my $3,200, if it gets accepted by the planning commission, I agree to pay you 12% of everything I make on that house. Wow. You couldn't get a sweeter deal. I mean, if I don't rent it out, I still have to pay a tax every year to keep it alive. I paid you $3,200. I provided absolutely no impact to the city. No one's come in and used my place, and I'm still the same person using it. When we changed over, when we thought about changing over to the licensing, that way the CUPs would go away, they wouldn't run with the land anymore, we thought it was fair to be with the others. But I just look at it as, the complaint is always that these places are taking away from year-round housing. I sell these houses. A house and a flat starts at about $800,000. If you put 20% down, you're borrowing like $670,000. You're nuts, $4,500 a month. There's no one that's going to be able to afford the rent in the town, so you're not taking away from it. At the same time, the city is giving this money that you can redo your infrastructure, you can put it into things, there's a lot of things, and it's 55% of our budget. It's the largest thing, and I don't know a business around that would say, hey, let's put a cap on the only thing that, that is over half of our budget. That doesn't, as a businessman, that doesn't make any sense to me at all. In the last 15 years, when we checked with Amanda, the number of these things has really not been up or down. It's been the same, so...
Yeah, appreciate your comments. And Amanda, I have a, explain to me option three a little more clearly.
Okay, so option three would be, let me back up. Our current saturation says if...
Oh, right, okay.
The current saturation is, you look at House A is applying. House B are all the houses around, immediately adjacent to House A.
Okay.
If any House Bs are occupied by a year-round tenant, then you're looking to see if House A is going to close the box around that tenant. And that's the current saturation criteria. And it would still apply under the licensing.
Okay, and so, and with all of those CUPs, if you're, if you're going to box somebody in, but the community doesn't say anything, do, do I get boxed in?
The, it is a factor that the planning commission is supposed to consider unless there are other mitigating factors. It's not an outside, it's not an outright no.
Right, and it's within 300 feet? Or, or how far, how far out do you go from the location of that house?
It's just the immediately adjacent...
So if all of, so if you've got two or three people that are already living on the mainland, they're not going to say anything, they're not going to care. Right?
It's not a matter, it's not a matter of whether or not they say anything, it's just empirical data. This, this applicant is going to be the last person in the box, and now there's going to be a year-round occupant that's going to be completely surrounded by transient rentals. The planning commission should take that into consideration.
Well, that's what I'm saying, taking it in consideration. It's not an automatic that I could be boxed in.
I don't...
No, it's not an automatic. I think in all the times in 10 years that we've been doing this, I don't think we've ever had a, a situation where someone's been completely boxed in. When someone is about to be boxed in, though, and the neighbors come, those have been denied.
Yeah, and when, and people have kind of learned, because we've been doing this saturation criteria for quite a few years, the realtors and, and those people in the know, when someone says, I'm going to go in and apply, they come in and ask and say, can you do the saturation test on me, because I'm thinking of applying? And if they're going to box someone in, we've had people go, you know what, they're, I'm not going to do that. I just want to bother applying.
And then, and then it says, okay, and we switch to the licensing scheme, which would impact saturation since it would require a license holder to reapply after a designated amount of time. What does that mean? And would include more stringent expiration and revocation procedures?
Well, that's would be, we could write into the licensing agreement that we, the proposal was that they would have to renew it every year, just like you do a business license.
Yeah, it's going to be renewed every year as a business license. Now, the issue is this, if it is a CUP and you don't use it for a year, okay, it is, if you want to revoke it, you have to go through a public hearing. If it's a license and you don't do it for a year, we're pretty sure you can just revoke it with no public hearing required. Yeah.
That's good. Either we revoke it, or they don't renew it, either one.
Correct. So it's, it's easier for us to get rid of non, non, non-using licenses, because it's a license, it doesn't run with the land, because it doesn't run with the land.
Again...
It doesn't have all the requirements and due process requirements.
I have a feeling we'll be dead before we see that. I mean, I, I mean, if we approve it today, we'll be dead before we actually have to do that, I imagine. But, okay, so we're good on amortization and license? And then, again, back to saturation, do we want to stick with kind of what we have? Sure.
I just want to say it on record, because I'm hoping people are watching, because this is such a hot topic, and, and I know, these permits have to comply with the ordinance, with the CUP, um, application. So they are revocable. If people do not, people have problems with their condition, with their vacation rental next door and all that, it's, I know they go on social media and they complain about it. That's great, but if you don't walk in the, into City Hall or call and file a, a complaint, so it's on record, and we can track, you get three of them, and you can get that permit taken away. It's enforcement. But we can't enforce it unless they don't, unless they go, don't, if they don't go through the process. So we need to really reach out to the community and let them know the process, so that way, you know, if there is noise problems or, or situations, that it can be handled and it can be revoked. You're in jeopardy. And that, too, will eliminate vacation rental.
Okay. Counsel?
I'd like to thank the planning commission for coming up with some great suggestions, and I'd like option number three.
I like 3.2, or 3.3.
Or 3 also?
Or 3 also, yeah, that's my, 3 also.
I think that covers it. How about the planning commission members that are in the audience? Number three. Option three? Option three, we good?
If we've got a quorum here, we need to be careful.
You cannot, you cannot discuss among yourselves if you, if you have a preference that you'd like to put on the record. No, it's not violating the brand act.
So let's go into the bathroom one at a time, and you can tell me what you're thinking. Oh, that's because it's in a bathroom?
Yeah.
I guess, I'm just going to sort of, just so it's a recorded item, I will make an emo, a motion to ask staff to prepare an ordinance for the planning commission and city council consideration with the, with the agreeance of the licensing, the transition of transient rental entitlement, and I guess we don't need to do that for option number three, but would request that we, city staff sticks with option three in regards to the saturation.
Second.
You would also, though, include the amortization?
Yes, I'm sorry, that, that was all part of it, include the amortization. The amortization explains what we want to do.
As explained in the...
Yeah.
Right. So...
I'll keep second.
Called in second? Yeah. Moved in second. I would just like to say, it's, it's, I mean, this has taken years, right?
Well, our joint meeting was...
No, no, it's great, all the information, it took a while to get that information, but...
Our joint meeting was in September of 2018.
The 2018? Yeah, so this, this is really awesome, and then if other stuff comes forward, we can discuss it then. Call for the vote.
All right.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody. Nicely done.
Okay.
Okay, item number nine is a new legislative platform policy. This is something, over all the years, letters come before the council, we want you to, say the mayor says, I want to send a letter to the legislative to state XYZ, and then we have to bring it before the council to make sure that you're all on board with the same thing. So this platform gives us the right to do that after, and then it comes back every year. Michael Plummer has done a phenomenal job working with towns in our grants people on this. He's very passionate about legislative, and I know that this is a direction the council wanted. So I'm very appreciative for Michael taking this ball and running with it.
I make a motion to adopt...
If you didn't, I would have. It's, I mean, very well done.
Second.
Moved in second.
You're winning.
Call for the vote.
I mean, can you, I just, no.
Any public comment?
No, so what was it? Michael, I didn't mean to steal your thunder.
But Michael, Michael, what was an interesting comment is because I received the SCAGs, one of these legislative platforms? He says, you get one from Cal, he gets one. So why can't, and then he kind of, oh, he kind of explained why we can't all just get together and do one instead of everybody paying somebody else?
Regional issues.
Yes, and that's his answer. And his answer was regional issues.
Uh, this, the legislative platform here, this actually deals with local or regional, state and federal issues. This is basically a, a very high-level, macro-level view. It does not preclude staff from coming back to seek additional council guidance if there's something not in there, and if there are additional directions, we will, we will go back.
We appreciate it. It was good reading. Okay, now we're going to, we have a closed session as well, right?
Hospital.
Session will be five minutes.
Okay, but should, let's do, can we...
I'll call to order the handback.
Avalon, city council...
You deal with them all the time. Health department.
City council reports.
LA County.
Yeah. And anyway, so look at cost and efficiency and that kind of thing, to see if there's another option.
See if they want to do it, too.
And see if they want to do it.
Have Long Beach, city of Long Beach do the health inspections rather than the county.
Thank you. Okay, we're going into closed session?
Okay, we have one closed sessions conference with legal counsel, existing litigation. This is Long Beach Unified versus Santa... This is Long Beach Unified versus Santa Catalina Company and Avalon.
And I need to abstain for part of this?
No.
Okay.
Um, oh, yes, to the extent that it involves discussion of the Island Company and any actions we may take against the Island Company, yes.
So if that happens and I abstain, then I'll be leaving the meeting for the night?
Correct.
Okay.
Goodnight, Tony.
Goodnight, Tony.
And we're back from closed session.
No report of action.
Thank you. Leading the journey.